Okay, so we get started. And before we open this special session, we have a greeting from the president of INFN, Antonio Zoccoli, and from the director of the laboratory, Ezio Previtali. Please, Antonio.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you very much. They're all welcome to everybody. It's really a pleasure to welcome you in this meeting. I think that Borexino is one of the most important initiatives we had at the National Laboratory of Gran Sasso. And it's a very successful story. We started from the beginning and we built up this apparatus, which is unique at the world. And now, all the technology which has been developed in this experiment are exploited in different initiatives. For example, the Juno experiment in China. I think that Borexino at the end performed in a magnificent way, probably above also the expectations, and gave a fundamental contribution in understanding the mechanism inside the sun. So apart of the measurement of the neutrino fluxes and all the information related to the reaction inside the sun, I think the latest result, the one where for the first time the CNO cycle has been detected and measured, is really fundamental and exciting. Unfortunately, after this long scientific life, the experiment is... it came to an end. As you know, we started the commissioning of the experiment also due to some external constraint. And, okay, we couldn't avoid this part. But I would like really to congratulate all of you for the excellent work and the beautiful result and the big scientific contribution you gave to the research field in this area. So thank you very much and good work.
Thank you, Antonio. Now Ezio.
Okay, just a few words. So welcome to all of you in this meeting. Let me say that it's difficult for me to say welcome in general in the sense that I know that there are... This long story of Borexino started in my mind in Milan in the early 90s. I was a... I was at the time, I was a young PhD student. I remember that there was a lot of presentation on Borexino organized by Gianpaolo Bellini. And it was a long discussion. And I practically see all the construction of the CTF before and then of the Borexino tank, because I was involved in experimenting in O.C. And so it's a... I see the experiment that was growing time by time, creating further the CTF tanks. And then, so it was a long story, a longest and very successful story. I have the feeling that, in my opinion, as was reported also by Antonio, that Borexino is, in my opinion, one of the most successful stories in the last decades for the result obtained, for the milestone that was reached. I am almost sure that the Borexino reached a level of technological and scientific reach that will be the reference for the future. And this is, in my opinion, the great achievement of all the collaboration and all the technologies that was developed. Borexino has completed its life. I believe that there are probably some more data that could be added at the end. But I would like to give to all of you the congratulations for this very successful story, long and successful story. I believe that I'm now speaking as an actual director, but there are also many... some other directors. Eugenio is here in front of me, but there are many other people that are interested to send to you, all of you, the congratulations and to the... so the success to remind to all the astroparticle physics community that Borexino experiment was a very great success in our field of research. So have a nice day in Gran Sasso. But you know, you've stayed in Gran Sasso for a long time, so nice days in Gran Sasso. And I would like to send to all of you my warm congratulations again.
Thank you, Ezio. So we can get started with this special session. So in... after the stop of the data taking, we decided to have a special session during the present collaboration meeting. While I'm presenting this special session, you will see a video on the background made by Gianpaolo... Antonio Gianpauli, sorry, from the Gran Sasso laboratory. So the... okay, let's start the video. So the special session will review the history and accomplishment of Borexino by Gianpaolo Bellini. Then we have invited Jim Whitmore, who has followed the development of Borexino from the National Science Foundation over many years. So the collaboration is very grateful to Jim for his effort made over many years. I recall Jim was attending many of the scientific committee meetings in person in Gran Sasso. So thank you, Jim, for your effort. Then we have four contributions on the science related to Borexino by Wieke Axton from Berkeley University and by Fabio Mantovani on Geonutrinos from Ferrara University and by two close by related colleagues, Francesco Visani from the Gran Sasso Laboratory and Francesco Villante from the University of La Quila. Okay, so the video is not starting. Okay, so thank you for this video. By the way, I'd like to greet my Borexino colleagues from remote, who could not make it for today to be here in presence, mainly because of the COVID. We had a number of increased restrictions in the last two weeks. And many of them had to cancel their attendance. So we... Gianpaolo, are you there? So the first... Okay. You can start.
Yes, I'm doing. Okay, you see the projection? Aldo?
Yes.
Yes, we see.
It's fine, okay. So I can start?
Yes, you can start, Gianpaolo.
Okay, I... as you know, I have been requested to present the recollection of the Borexino history in 33 years of our efforts. And I think that in an hour, I can give only some flesh and show some pictures. I think that... I insist more is events before 2007, because I think that many of the present collaborators are not aware of what happened between 1990 and 2007. And perhaps I surely lost something and because there is too many activity, too many events. And in any case, I hope I'm sorry for that. I also to say that unfortunately I had the mistake, because in this PowerPoint, I mention some people responsible or they you think, but it was impossible, of course, to mention all people involved. So I apologize if I forgotten somebody and I hope that they are not to be offended. In addition, I'd like to say that I have no time, unfortunately, in an hour. It is a long time, but it's not enough to say all I written in this PPT. But this PPT later I will post on... I will post it on the site, the Borexino site. And then the people interested to go a little deeper on this matter can read in his site. Okay, so the beginning. We start in 1988, when Raju Agarwal and myself started the discussion for an experiment on stralineutrinos. Raju Agarwal, at that time, was in Balab, and I was doing an experiment on chama particle lifetime in Fermilab. Raju was proposing a big experiment, 10,000 tons, using ball-loaded scintillator as idea in order to study the ball-nuclear fusion neutrinos. His idea is to good... to have a good estimation of the temperature of the sun core. It's clear that in that case, the threshold would be about 5 mV over natural radioactivity maximum energy. The experiment was called BOREX. But I would like to say there was not much interest, because in the same time, there was two experiments progress just in the same research, even if probably the scintillator was able to give more performance, as is the case of water change of light. So during 88, 89, we discussed and tried to design an experiment with a threshold below 1 mV. And we focus our attention on behelium-7 neutrino flux. Of course, the first constraint is radio purity, because of the tie detector. And first of all, we tried to do a design which minimizes the construction material and to use only one vessel for the scintillator, because all materials for us, for our purpose, are radioactive. To discuss at the moment was involved also Franz von Farisch and Frank Alaprius. I'd like to say that since the beginning, this experiment was surrounded by the physics community skepticism. And because many of them were thinking that we would be absolutely unable to do this experiment. And I would like to say that unfortunately, this attitude has accompanied us always through the experiment construction, but also in some part of the analysis. Anyway, because this experiment would be defeated more than BOREX, which is called BORXINO, which means small box. In 1990, we start the real work and we had a period of five years of RMD in order to develop tools and method for the purification of the scintillator. Scintillator, as I explained later, was a pseudo-comin in our mighty liquid and as so as to the PPO. We chosen a 1:5 gram per liter concentration, and this was a compromise between the amount of scintillator light that was interested for us and the potential contribution to the internal background due to the potassium and polonium present in the PPO. Now, why chosen, which doesn't just pseudo-comin PPO? In the end of 80s, the PC was a preferred choice with respect to other solvent, because less harmful. In addition, we had two component. One is a faster fluorescent component, followed by a slow component as a delay of phosphorescence and phosphorescence. And this was very useful in order to distinguish between different particles. And for instance, as you know very well, alpha-beta discrimination. In addition, this has a high light field. Now, PPO, PPO was chosen because, first of all, its wavelength has a good match with the spectral response of the phototubes. But in addition, it translates the wavelength in a region far from the absorbent region of the scintillator. You see from this plot that this red dashed is the PPO emission and this in black continuous line is the PC absorption. And this allowed us to have a good absorption length as you know, around 8 meter. But immediately, we had another problem, because not only the problem to reach the desired radio purity, which was 10 to minus 16 gram over gram, but also to find a detector able to measure this high radio purity, because at that time, the only instrument existing close to this was a max spectrometer with plasma source with a maximum sensitivity at 10 to minus 10 gram over gram. Then we decided to build a benchmark for Borexino. We call it Counting Test Facility, and which consisted with four tons of scintillator surrounded by 1,000 tons of high-proified water with 100 photomultipliers. And but of course, due to the fact that we need a high-proified water, we had to install a purification plant for the water. First, PNT, what we chosen is eight each ETL. ETL was a British company. I say was, because now we know more there. And because it was already known that the glass is a very radioactive source, we establish a collaboration with ETL in order to use a low radioactive glass. And this was a long discussion and difficulties, because of course, this was completely new for the company. For light concentrator, we use something larger of the wisdom code used in now Borexino. If we see one picture of this. And the construction started in 92. The tank was constructed by a technician at the University of Munich. And the photomultiplier were mounted by two persons of Milan, is Augusto Brigatti and Giovanni Bakriocchi. Unfortunately, Giovanni Bakriocchi is no more with us. I would like also to say, interesting thing, that Bruce spent the Christmas and New Year period between 94 and 95, just a G.S. with his father-in-law and his uncle in order to fill the CTF with the purified water. Okay, the electronics is done in Milan and in Genova. The vessel was prepared in Preseton. And this we see just a prototype of the vessel in one workshop, just in principle, in Preseton. I think it was 1994. There is here Marco Gianmarco, Frank, Frank, myself, Franz, Martin Deutsch and Pramila, who was the wife of Raju Agarwal. In this seminar, of course, has been started, first of all, in his laboratory. Test of the method for the purification of the PC was done in Balab by Raju and Antonio De Barie, who was a chemist from Pavia. And the most of the tests are done in principle by Jay Benziger and Frank. The realization of the system for, just I refer to CTF, was done in Gran Sasso. And they consist in an underbaking distillation. Why underbaking? Because we did not... we was not interested to go at high temperature, because high temperature can extract contaminants embedded on the surface of the material of this, of the distillation column. Also water extraction, ultrafiltration as a level of 0.5 micron and nitrogen sparging. Is it in the case of CTF, the pseudo-comin was purified only with water extraction, ultrafiltration in nitrogen sparging. Then in 95, we are able to do the first measurement of the radio purity of uranium and thorium in this progeny in CTF. And what you found is 5, 10 to minus 16 gram over gram, which was the maximum sensitivity of CTF. So this means that we reached what were requested by the design. I remember that at the time, at this seminar I did in Gran Sasso, was president, was president at the time, Riccardo Maiani. And it, he approved it in principle as Borexino. And I would like now to spend just to order on two person. And without, I think, these two person, probably was impossible to do Borexino. And this are Riccardo Maiani, as already I already mentioned, and also Enrico Bellotti, who was the director of the Gran Sasso in 1993. And Bellotti allowed us to install the CTF just in the middle of the O.C., leaving beyond the enough room for Borexino. Now, you seem to me, to you, that probably this was not something special. But it's special, because this is exactly this room was promised four years before to Carlo Rubbia. That at that time was already awarded of Nobel Prize. And if you know Carlo, this is not very easy to handle him. I think that both took the risk that the experiment will achieve its goal. So they take the risk with us with this very challenging experiment. These are just two picture. As a left, we have a cover of science, I think, in 95, with the structure, internal structure of Borexino. And right, you know very well, is one of the picture of the internal part of Borexino. However, the problem was not yet solved, because it's true that we should for atomic uranium what requested by the design. But we observe also how as radiation is a scintillator with significant rates. And we was not able to understand the source of the radiation and spent months in order to understand, discuss, calculate, etc. But the opinion were different. Then, in the semi-95, Giacchino, myself, and Scadaroni decided to do a test in Gran Sasso, increasing the amount on radon in the water. And this was done just reducing the nitrogen flow into the counter-current tower in order to decrease the nitrogen sparging and then to increase the radon, because nitrogen sparging was done just in order to take out the radon for the water. So we go ahead until the radon was 10 times increasing 10 times. And from the analysis we did later, we understand that, understood that all this radiation were due to the external material, water, PMT, etc. So finally, we understood that we are able to reach the radio purity necessary for the experiment and we go ahead. I would like just to say two funny episode. One, I remember that at the time, Frank, Bruce, and perhaps also Jay Benziger, spent a long time in the laboratory, in the lab of Gran Sasso, with Fred Loza, that was a very good technician from Preseton. And I remember that Fred complained, because Frank and Bruce were spending all the day discussing, long discussion. And finally, they started to work during the night and he was happy for this. I remember also another episode, that Gemma, in that period, left Genova in 95 with a car, but she has an accident. Even if she has no problem, we are very worried due to particular situation of Gemma, because really six months later, her daughter was born. Okay, now I have no time to discuss this slide. All I to say only that CTF produce also some physics result or relevance. And many of these produce that best limit. Only just to mention this one, this new experimental liminal violation power description principle, because I think that even now, this best limit is always the best. And I remember that is a is a paper done, is an analysis done on Borexino, the same subject. The situation remain more or less the same. So in nineteen, between ninety six and two thousand seven, we started the construction, installation and the tuning of the experiment. In the same time, to other group, join us, the Haidelberg Group, will take as a college of France with Emile de Corre. The very college of France, fine, later became Université de Parisette. Probably we think that eleven year is a very long time in order to construct an experiment. But there is two circumstances. One, then we have been stopped for more than two years by the Court of the Dermo, of Teramo. Just because it was a small accident, about thirty liter of PC, we have spilled in a creek that passes through either the Gassasso. I will, I will say something that later. But the most important reason is nothing is standard in Borexino. And everything has been done on purpose, both for the component and for the methods. And I just give you some example. For instance, all the construction material have been no detector, the storage, etc., all the vessels has been selected for to five value of radioactivity using the German detector in the La Westine lab. In addition, all the internal surfaces of the stenosis sphere of the storage vessel and all the lines were pickled and passivated. First, in order to extract contaminants embedded in the surfaces and also to make easier to clean from particulate and dust. The PNT, we follow exactly the same, the same methods then for the CTF with glass with particularly low radioactivity, etc. All the part in contact with the PC or the pump were done in Teflon. Some found in the market, but some done on purpose. The PNT were sealed with steel capsule with mineral oil and epoxy resin to resist the piazzu cumin and were tested in two liquid tanks in PC, surrounded by water and left there until two thousand ten. And monitored by continuously. As a moon veto, on the other hand, for the PNT of the moon veto, on the other hand, where encapsulate in steel with mineral inside because it's where in the water. And just I show you this funny cartoon prepared by a member of my group of in Fermilab. They say, perhaps I myself or Giacchino, I don't know. He say, no, no, I guarantee you, we reach ten to minus sixteen gamma over gamma and you can do even better than that. And there is a fish inside the two liquid tank. Okay, the nylon vessel has been prepared, first of all, in film in control of the air and must factor in a clean room of class hundred, radon free, as is done in Princetone. And but also the nitrogen used for the sparging needed to be purified. And then a cryogenic plant with been installing Gassasso for the radon, to avoid this reason, to purify nitrogen for the radon. But the analysis or also the content of argon, thirty nine argon and thirty five krypton, both are radioactive, was analyzed in a dock plant prepared in Haidelberg. We set up also five clean room. One is was in old Montaggio. And I mentioned only the clean room one of class one thousand, which is tall as entry of the water tank. In such way, whatever enters the detector was cleaned. And another clean room, as a clean room four, was installed as the top of the detector and was of class between one, between ten and one hundred. We will be used with calibration and he was equipped also with a glove box. Finally, the standard, the stenosis sphere itself was equipped as a class ten thousand clean room. You see, this is a preparation of the inner vessel in Princetone. This is in a clean room one and this also is the clean room one. In addition, the detector was sealed as a level of ten to minus microbar liter per second in order to prevent the entry inside it radon from the ground air. Because in the underground, the rate is relatively high. It was in any case higher than hundred big help permit a cube. And I remember that was installed, I think, as the top of the CTF, a special chamber in order to measure continuously the radon in the underground area. The well also has done only orbital wells on TIG, all done in nitrogen atmosphere. Okay, so I already talk of the detector. I wanted to say that in my, I will tell later that in Saroc, we had the laboratory in order to check, test continuously the PC during the procurement. But this I will say you later, later. Okay, the water purification system was the same as at the CTF, this was enough. But what we added is analysis system. And with this system, we understood that the presence of thorium and is a water of ten to minus fourteen gamma over gamma, what is is good, is enough. This system was built and installed by other, by other group. But in addition, Princetone added a distillation plant which distilled the water just already passed it through the water purification system in order to have better purification when one, this water is used for water extraction. The electronics is completed then in Genova. And the only difference is that the fast DC was installed later. I remember between probably in two thousand two by clean, by Princet. In addition, it's done also a precision cleaning all the line using acid and detergent with a special cleaning module. A few word on the procurement, because this was a difficult task. The procurement, the piazzu cumin was produced by a, a polymer Europa, was a company connected with ENI and was in Saroc, in Slovenia. But it was a difficult agreement with them because finally was not so interested to produce for us this, this amount of piazzu cumin. Because for them were a very small amount. But in addition, we asked a special session in order to have first an oil very old and coming from the old and deeper, deeper layers in order to have a low carbon fourteen content. Second, we asked that during the production of our piazzu cumin, the distillation tower, is a tower, go slowly in order to have a better distillation. Third, we asked the possibility to, to install a special loading station and the connection line between production tower and the station will clean material and clean procedure. Then we asked also a lab in order to, there check the PC when produced in order to check the transparencies. The production for us was possible only during the day when one of the four is a tank of our property was filled. While during the night, there continues a different type of production. Another organization has been the logistic. Because iso tank once filled, had to reach the underground laboratory as soon as possible. We succeeded in eighteen, in eighteen hour in order to minimize the production of radioactive nukites such as baryon seven by the cosmic ray. Okay, in, of course, yes, we, we construct a loading station in a safety area in Tier Gallery. And one arrived in, in the OC. Time to time, the PC was also checked in CTF in order to measure the content of carbon fourteen. This we see at, at left, the four iso tank used. And this is Scadaroni in our loading station constructed by us at Saroc. Also, the storage area had a difficult part. Because first of all, he had big, treat as a detector system. Because the four vessel were pickled and passivated, directed to production site. And around them, a retaining wall has been built in order to contain all the volume corresponding to the whole content of the four vessels. In addition, an automatic cooling, cooling system, a fire extinguisher system had been installed starting automatically in case of need. And many of the, so has been installed in case of, in order to have signal in case of danger. The four storage tank were equipped with raptor disc in case of overpressure. And this raptor disc were connected with a blow down system which collects the gases eventually emitted and lead them to a tank full of water and metal material. I, unfortunately, this system never needed to operate. The purification plant was done in this way. The low pressure distillation column was built in Princetone, mounting inside the skid and send it to, to Gassasso with ultrafiltration. And the water extraction, on the other hand, has been prepared just in OC. The purification is done in this way. The PC was distilled and filtered during the filling and add little by little by with the PPO. And for, in order to clean it, we prepare a PP, PP solution with thirty gram per liter of PC with cold master solution, which was water extracted and filter independently. In addition, you said, in two thousand ten, we proceeded with the first purification using water extraction, this time in batch, because scintillator was already in reaching, as you know, something in ten to minus nineteen, ten to minus twenty gamma over gamma. We, we had to install also exhaust system. And this was due to the fact that nitrogen system, nitrogen used for the blanket is a free surface all the tank. Perhaps when it been extracted from, from the detector, perhaps had some molecule of, of PC. And this is considered very dangerous. So first of all, it passed it through a active carbon filters. And then the gas was passed it through a VOC, a volatile organic carbon. And only if we don't found signal, was released in the Tier Gallery. But we have problem also to the fact that Gassasso is in the systemic areas. And I would like to say that when you started to construct the detector, we follow the, the requirement of the region, or John Abuzzi for systemic areas, but this were competing adequate. So we had to review our project, our facility when Bettini became the director of the Gassasso. And what I had to do was to find first an expert of the earthquake and found it in Faccioli, was a professor Politecnico di Milano. And he developed a study just style, just giving the profile of the possible earthquake with the big accelerator possible as a magnitude. While another expert that they found is Castellani, who was the director of the Institute for Construction in Systemic Area, review all our, our design for what concern the stenosis sphere and the water tank. And for the standards, for the SSS, I think, if I remember, we not to change nothing. But for water tank, we had to add the external reinforcement with steel profile that is very visible. Unfortunately, I would like to say that the study was of Faccioli was very good and corresponding effect to what happened later with during the earthquake of Laquilla, a few years ago. We had also to prepare a water disposal system, installing three tanks of ten meter cube each in the Tier Gallery. And all the water used was just sent to these tanks and they later dispose as, or to as waste. Only the, the water really not practical, not used has been, have been obliged to, to pass it through a total organic carbon instrument. And then after controlling it to discharge in wastewater network. I would have no time, but I just few, few word on the fact that around, if I remember, two thousand, the German colleague searched for an alternative scintillator, which was a pixie and test it in CTF. I, I, I have no time to explain why finally we continue with the PC. I think that because we were not completely convinced that the pixie was better. Even perhaps it was worse in some aspect. But I think the most important that we had already dedicated a lot of time and work on the PC. These are some picture, this is Lino installing the optical fibers. I think this probably is, I don't know, is Paolo, is contemplating the, the stenosis sphere already filled of phototube and light concentrators. And here is this mounting or scaffolding after have completed the amount of the photodubs. This is just a view of the bottom EV, of the bottom EV was installed. And this is the stenosis sphere before to install it. This is a picture of the collaboration that time. These are as pictures that I found, we see Alessandro, Gemma Barber, Gemma Paolo here and Elena Lazlo and Augusto. Here, I think that was interesting is, okay, this is what you know is the water tank before the installation. And this is the installation of Tyrec. Tyrec was installed over the stenosis sphere. Tyrec was installed over the stainless sphere and internally of the water tank. And the, the reason of it is that this material reflected. The water, the chamber water produced by the crossing of the new one. This is Bruce in, sorry. Is a class, is, in, in a class ten. One hundred clean room for just all the user for the calibration. Okay. And now I had to, to say few word on, but it's already very, very far, okay. How, how much time I have more? Aldo?
Gianpaolo, you have fifteen minutes left.
In, okay.
Including some time for questions because we have the constraint that at four ten. We Caxton need to start because of time constraints, yes.
Okay, so I go very quick here. I, I see I was paying something on the management. I would like to say that, as you know, I has been spokesman for nineteen ninety. And I had practically so coordinated all activities. Then later, we install, we decided a site manager in the O C. And pro, and pro project manager for Paul Marshall, later Lotte and Giorgino. And especially where fixed a, a, a weekly meeting and to the all of the people present in Gansasso. Okay, in one, in August two thousand two, arrived this famous spill of thirty liter in a creek. And we are, we are stopped by the coast of Laquila. And this is a reaction of terrible because the people are against the collaborative. We are stopped for two years. And some of them were also denounced by the judge for the preliminary. Preliminary investigation. We start again in the middle of two thousand four, and that case we changed it. The first one, I think, is the winning decision was to appoint an operational group. Including members of the collaboration. But independent for the group origin and directed by Bustovati. This was a difficult decision, but finally was the winning decision. And we installed also steering committee with director by Marco Palavicini. And in addition, for what concern all the handling of the P C. For in connection with the detector. We, 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 I found three person which were expert. They have experience of many years in the petrol chemical sector. And they will give a contract to them. And they start first the procurement of the P, start, follow the procurement of the P C. Then they review all the, our plant. And eventually ask to change something. But in addition, they given also a. A preparation for the people of the story, of the operational group. In April two thousand seven, with, before, within six, we. We started with the procurement and the purification. Of the P C, P C and finding two thousand seven, we started the data taking. Okay, I have here various picture, but I have no time to show it. And now I, I talk a little of the analysis. I would like to say that we started the data taking in April two thousand seven. And already in July two thousand seven, you presented the first measurement on billion seven. As neutrino flux of the billion seven neutrino flux at tau two thousand seven in San Diego. And I remember that Kuninue, chair, chairperson of the conference. Define our result as the most important great news of tau two thousand seven. The first publication in two thousand seven appear in, already in two thousand seven. And then we publish in two thousand eight, paper in two thousand eight, in two thousand nine, two thousand eleven. And finally, in two thousand nineteen. And the first uncertainty of five percent. Of the, of the measures of flux have been reduced later to point five percent. Then we measure also the bonnet. This, we had, we published two paper, one in two thousand ten, a second one two thousand twenty. With the total uncertainty eight percent. But the, the, the new is that the threshold was, was fixed down to three M V. And this was important because this value can say something on, on the upturn of the P. On, in the transition region going from the matter to vacuum regime. In two thousand ten, we published the first or complete neutrino. Followed by other, other paper. In two thousand thirteen, in two thousand twenty. And in two thousand thirteen, we published on physical review letter, is a visual review, sorry. And we achieved this of more than five sigma. I would like to say that before us, Carmeland published a, the evidence of, of the neutrino. The evidence was two point five sigma. And in two thousand ten, our first paper, we achieved more than three sigma. In two thousand twelve, we published a paper concerning the data symmetry. In the billion seven, we found to be null. And the consequence of this, the origin. At about delta square equal to ten to minus seven E B square. Has been ruled out using, in addition to our data, also all the solar neutrino experiment results. But in that case, without the need of the camera anti neutrinos and after without using the C P D. In period two thousand nine, two thousand ten, we proceeded with the calibration. With our elementary physical sources plus a variable. With red unloaded centiliter, this was prepared party done by Milano and part by Bruce in Princeton. In Virginia Tech. Okay, I go ahead without this. And, okay, in two thousand fourteen. We published the first paper on the German relation. Followed in two thousand seventeen was the second paper. The first paper was connected with the dating of phase one, the second of phase two. And we obtain results in good agreement with expectation with a systematic content percent. It's clear that we don't need all this measurement in order to demonstrate the solar origin of neutrino. Because this was implicitly, implicitly demonstrated by the neutrino energy and petra shape in agreement. And with the expectation for nuclear action producing them. But this was another direct demonstration of this, of the solar origin. In two thousand twelve, we published the measure, measurement of the P P reaction. And we repeated it in two thousand eighteen with an uncertainty of about seventeen percent. In two thousand fourteen. We measure what perhaps was the most difficult for in P P chain. The flux from P P reactions, the progenitor of the whole P P chain. This was difficult because the energy of the neutrino was very small. The flux ends at four hundred twenty kilo with a maximum at one hundred sixty four kilo. And the greatest interference was due to carbon fourteen. Finally, what we obtain is a measurement with an uncertainty about eleven percent. In that year, we are, we have been nominated among the top ten break two, two thousand fourteen. And we had a post office, a post, a stamp of the Italian post office. Celebrating Gansasso and we are the representative of the lab. Now, in two thousand eighteen, we published a comprehensive measurement of P P billion seven. P P a bonnet obtained with, no, I think that bonnet was more there. Only P P billion seven, P P measured the comprehensive fit. And in that case, as you know, because the P P chain. Producing the ninety nine percent all energy of the sun. We were able to compare the solar luminosity via neutrino and via photon. And demonstrated them the thermodynamic stability of the sun over ten to five years scale.
Gianpaolo, sorry, you have five minutes left.
Okay, I still have three, three, this slide. For the senior, okay, I, I have not spent time to, to talk of the senior. Because I think that all of you more or less. Know the sequel of these analyses. And also of this, so I don't talk of the, of the adjustment of the management. This is a picture of the collaborations then. And I would like to finish, I have still two sides. Saying something on this, this picture, this, this plot. I think that what we published on sun and the star. I think is very, very interesting, especially for astrophysicists and astroparticle physicists. But there are something else that are very interesting for the physicist of oriental particle. And the result concerning the survival probability on electron neutrino. In fact, what we are able to do is to measure for the first time. The, the survivor probability in vacuum regime. To, okay, we measure also in, in, in matter regime. And then we are able, as only one experiment, to give the ratio between the two survival probability. But what you remain for, in order to understand completely the oscillation. Is to understand the shape of the transition region. We already reproduce something. And here also there is the, the data of superconducting, there are better than this. But I think that we are not enough. And I, I show why. This is example, in this dashed and dash, point like line. Of two, two shape of transition region. Considering two different values of Epsilon, which is the strength parameter for non standard interaction. And we see that both our result in this of superconducting are notable. To rule out the possibility that this issue could be influenced by non standard interaction. We know that you study also the non standard, the non standard interaction. And you know that our results combined with the result of the experiment. Restricted the loud region of Epsilon in a very small region close to zero. But this is not enough in order to rule out the N S I. I, I have no time to, to say something on the other paper. Published by Borexino and I to the conclusion. First of all, I think that we can say that Borexino's unique experiment. Has now answered to the millennium question of the mankind. On how sun and a star are able to shine. But now we have to first to thank all members of the collaboration who doing three decades coming on. And among them, only about fifteen started their work in early nineties and are still working experiment now. I only to thank Frank because even sometime we did not always agree. He, he, he has been a great fellow in this enterprise. I would like also to remember that fourteen collaborators passed away. I have no time to describe the all of them. But what I also to say is that in the same time, many more children was born to young Borexino collaborators. Finally, I would like to finish this long, long, long talk. Saying that the legacy of Borexino is not only. The technical, technical achievement and the result. But I think that also important for the young researcher. Because he can understand, not to be afraid to engage himself in very challenging experiment. As Borexino was. Because important discovery mainly come from endeavors. And this is a result, I would like to mention a scientist, John McColl. John McColl was the father of the standard solar model. But also a Borexino very great friend and supporter. And if this tend to say is that the most important discoveries. Will provide answers to question that we do not yet known how to ask. Concern of objects we have not yet imagined. Thank you for your attention.
Gianpaolo, thank you very much for this detailed review of thirty three years of activity on Borexino. So we have time for a couple of questions, if any, before we pass the word to Wee Caxton. So is there any question for Gianpaolo? Okay, so if not, we thank you again, Gianpaolo. And we ask Wee Caxton, Wee, are you ready?
I think I am.
Okay, thank you. So are you going to share your screen?
I'm trying to, let me see if I can. I think someone else is already sharing, says, oh, okay. Good.
Okay, so we can see your screen.
There.
Okay, you can get started.
Okay, thank you. First, it's a really great pleasure for me to, to be here virtually. And I've, I've had a career that's intersected a good portion of the history of the solar neutrino problem. And I, I really consider Borexino to be one of the great experiments that has occurred during my, my scientific career. So I'm, I'm really honored to be here. I want to go way back and talk about the beginning of the field. Excuse me, it's still night here, my lights keep going off. Betan and Chris Field in nineteen thirty eight, nineteen thirty nine. Really developed the theory of hydrogen burning stars. And it's interesting, even that was five years after Fermi wrote down his theory of the weak interaction. There was no explicit mentioning, mention of neutrinos in any of that work. Horace Crane in nineteen forty eight is usually credited as being the first person to actually discuss solar neutrinos. And he did so to derive a limit on the neutrino cross section from solar neutrino heating of the earth. The field really began in nineteen forty six with Porticorvo's suggestion that you might actually be able to detect neutrinos in chlorine thirty seven. Louis Alvarez took that idea and studied all, in a very comprehensive way, many of the background issues. And this had a profound influence on Ray Davis's decision to, to pursue this experiment. He even thought about solid applications in nineteen forty nine. And finally, the field begins with Davis's Brookhaven experiment back in nineteen fifty five, which was four tons and nineteen feet deep. So quite a contrast with what we do today. One thing that doesn't change is referees, and so this is the referee report for that experiment. It was very dismissive of the idea of, of measuring solar neutrinos. And indeed, Davis had to improve his results by about four orders of magnitude over the next twenty years. To, to really produce a measurement of the solar neutrino flux. produce a measurement of the solar neutrino flux. There's a wonderful story about these early years in solar neutrinos that was written by John McCollum Davis, and you can still find it on John McCollum's website at the Institute for Advanced Study. In the 1950s, it was believed that the sun produced primarily pp neutrinos with a little bit of an additional CNO component that was very difficult to quantify because the solar core temperature in the standard model was quite uncertain then. The big breakthrough came in 1959 in a measurement by Holmgren and Johnson of the helium-3 alpha reaction. This is the reaction that feeds the beryllium-7 and boron-8 branches of the solar neutrino flux. And the result was 1,000 times larger than the theoretical estimate that people had relied on for this cross section. So there was tremendous enthusiasm at that point because if you folded this result with Ray's work, it looked like you could do a relatively straightforward way, a chlorine 37 measurement of solar neutrinos. However, a year later, Kavanaugh measured the beryllium-7 gamma cross section that actually produces the high-energy neutrinos and found that branch was quite small, and so that was a disappointing result. Still, Willie Fowler was really excited about this possibility of combining the solar model with Davis's experimental techniques. And so in 1962, he hired postdoc John McCollum to come to Caltech and join Eben and Sears. And the goal of that was to build a better standard solar model, one that could predict the core temperature quantitatively, and then allow them to actually estimate the solar neutrino fluxes that were needed to support the experimental proposal. A year later, McCollum Davis proposed a 100-ton chlorine experiment. It looked very, very difficult at that time, like it probably wouldn't yield a non-zero result. But later that year, John McCollum gave a seminar at Copenhagen, and Ben Molson was in the audience, and he asked John about the contribution of excited states, including the isospin analog state in the capture of boron-8 neutrinos. So John went home after that seminar and did a calculation of that cross section with the excited states included, and found out that the capture cross section for chlorine would go up by about a factor of 20 at that point. And the really great observation that John made was he realized he could go to the isospin analog of chlorine 37. That's the nucleus calcium 37, which is very short-lived and hadn't been detected at that time. But he could then estimate how these same excited states with isospin symmetry would change the lifetime of calcium 37, and he predicted that lifetime. And that was sort of a challenge to the nuclear physics community to go out and find, produce calcium 37 and measured that beta decay. That was done by two groups in 1964, and they found a lifetime that agreed within 25% from John's measurement. And John said when those experiments, those results were announced, it was the best day of his scientific career because he understood that this was basically a proof that they had under control the chlorine cross section and that the measurement of solar neutrinos was feasible. So Davis's first results were announced in 1968. It was an upper bound of three snu on the cross section, and that result tightened up over the next 30 years as the detector continued operations. It has a legacy very similar to that of Borexino. And it's a marvelous time, science of this scale could still be done fairly quickly. So three years from beginning of construction to the first results, and with a lot of help from the Home State Company in South Dakota to build this massive detector deep underground in an active mine. Now, the work that John did with Eben and Sears was really to try to formulate what we call today the standard solar model. It's a relatively simple model about the origin of solar neutrinos. It assumes local hydrostatic equilibrium in the star, so the gas pressure gradients counteracted everywhere by the gravitational force. It assumes hydrogen burning as the energy source and energy transportation, transport by radiation and convection, convection in the envelope, radiation in the interior, and then implies all the boundary conditions we have because of the sun, because the sun is so well-known, knows mass, radius, luminosity. We know the depth of its convective zone from its oscillations and so forth. To implement all this physics in a code requires first an equation of state for the electron gas, and it's pretty close to an ideal gas, requires cross sections for the very low-energy nuclear reactions that are important, and that's taken decades of work. It requires the specification of the radiative opacity, and some means of fixing the composition at a zero H main sequence, and that includes the ratio of hydrogen to helium to the heavy metals. And we'll come back to that theme because it's very important to Borexino. So this was the primary mechanism for energy generation in the sun. And why the Davis experiment was important was it was sensitive to the most temperature-dependent high-energy neutrinos that came from this source. And so it was viewed in those days as a marvelous way of measuring the core temperature quantitatively, and therefore checking that we actually had a viable model, theoretical model, of hydrogen burning stars. So you can think of the neutrino basically as thermometer for the solar core in this way. The chlorine experiment gave us one cut on the experimental fluxes that came, the fluxes that came from the pp chain, but although we had to wait 20 years, 20 years later, Cameo was able to confirm the Davis result by seeing a reduction in the boron-8 neutrinos, and soon thereafter, Gallop stayed the first indirect measurement of the low-energy solar neutrinos. And that really set the stage for Borexino and the other great experiments of the last 30 years. You could take those three results and plot them. It was done in various ways. This is a plot that was remade from something that Hatta did many years ago, but it basically shows the ratio of beryllium-7 to boron-8 neutrinos as a function of the core temperature. The solar model is really complicated, has something on the order of 23 parameters, but effectively, most of those, if you vary them, only one thing is really important, and that is how does that variation affect the core temperature? The core temperature governs the neutrino fluxes through a really good approximation, and that's shown here. So you get this curve that says, no matter what I do to the standard solar model, my flux should follow the predicted core temperature, and that's the curve that's shown here. When you plot the data from these three experiments, you wind up with a beryllium-7 boron-8 ratio that's not at all compatible with this generic universal curve, and that was the argument. But Professor Bellini mentioned the skepticism in the field. I think this was the argument that made people realize that this was a very serious field that deserved a lot of investment to try to find out what was the origin of the solar neutrino problem. And of course, that's what gave birth to these three marvelous experiments, Supercommecondes, the Subbury Neutrino Observatory, and Borexino. They were our next-generation detectors that were to solve this problem for us. Herb Chen proposed the heavy water as a solar neutrino detector in 1984. He lost his battle with leukemia just three years later in 1987, and Snowden was still in the early planning stages. The project was approved in 1990, first results came, not in 1990, I guess it was 1991 the first results came. The Cameo collaboration, that's way too early, I think it's 1999, if I misprint there. The Cameo collaboration proposed SuperK following a successful measurement of both solar and supernova neutrinos in the earlier Cameo experiment. That experiment was funded in 1991, was operational by 1996. And Borexino, as we just heard, was proposed in its present form in 1990. It had the unique goal, has the unique goal of a complete spectroscopy of the solar neutrino flux with unprecedented goals for the radio purity. So these were goals that no other experiment attempted in those days. I think the field was very fortunate that the solar neutrino spectrum probes the key energy range for oscillations, and Borexino was the experiment that mapped out that full spectrum of neutrinos for us. So the field was greatly influenced by the discovery of the MSW mechanism. We had thought of neutrinos as a fairly simple, neutrino oscillations as proposed by Porticorvo as a fairly simple process in which there's a mixing angle and a mass difference that governs the oscillations. But the MSW mechanism was the discovery that in fact, both the mixing angle and the mass difference were very sensitive to the densities in the sun. And in fact, those densities are almost perfectly chosen by nature to help us with the solar neutrino problem. They give us interesting physics right in the middle of the solar neutrino spectrum, physics that Borexino was able to explore. So the effective masses can be calculated, the electron neutrino essentially gets heavier relative to its flavor partners when embedded in matter. And the consequences of that is a dramatic change from vacuum oscillations to matter oscillations that can be exploited and explored in the sun. And it comes from a very familiar process of level crossing that we see in atomic physics. In fact, the basic physics of the MSW mechanism was known in the 30s because the same physics shows up when you scatter electrons off an atom. And this, for the conversion to be very effective, that is, for the oscillation to be perturbed in a major way by these matter effects, requires a very slow adiabatic level crossing as the effective neutrino masses change in matter. And that became very interesting because you could immediately write down the conditions to match the results of the chlorine, gallium, and Cameo experiments. You have the flux of neutrinos, and you know that you must have an adiabatic level crossing. There has to be a level crossing, there has to be adiabatic. You're destroying a lot of the neutrinos, but not all of them because Ray Davis saw some of them. So the game was to find out experimentally, and that's what, that was the motivation for these three experiments, experimentally. What were the proper parameters? What was the mixing angle and the mass difference that would allow you to reproduce what we're seeing experimentally? And that meant putting the flux of neutrinos, which I plot here, since the parameter is delta m squared over e in terms of the inverse energy of neutrinos, where does the spectrum lie on this curve? And there are lots of possibilities that would give you the results compatible with Davis and other experiments, and those are all along that line. And what actually happened was that the solution is here. And this was terrific for Borexino because the level crossing boundary is a very sharp one, the non-adiabatic boundary is not a sharp one. So a sharp one means that you see a lot of structure when you measure neutrinos as a function of energy, and that had a really positive effect on the importance of Borexino because Borexino was the experiment that was designed to see this kind of physics. So you'll hear much more about this today. I won't expand on it all, except these are really beautiful results, and what's being seen here is this wonderful transition from vacuum-dominated oscillations to matter-dominated. Two solar models issues are also involved in the Borexino program, and I find both of them of very special interest. One is the assumed equivalence of the sun's weak electromagnetic luminosities. We use as constraint the fact that neutrinos are determined by the photon luminosity we see from the sun. That's used in the standard solar model. But what's important is not that we use it, but that it be experimentally verified that this is a good, a solid assumption in the standard solar model. And since we know that there are two neutrinos produced per every helium nucleus synthesized, you can write down a very simple expression that relates the neutrino fluxes to the luminosity of the sun. You have to make a small correction because the neutrinos take off about 1% of the energy that's produced in the fusion process, so you have to subtract that from this equation. Yet you can make this direct relationship between the photons and the neutrinos provided no other new physics is going on in the sun. That's the issue. No other, for instance, anomalous particle physics. And what's important here is that you have quantitative measurements for the pp, beryllium-7, boron-8, p, and CNO neutrinos, and that's the Borexino program. There's some wonderful papers in the literature exploring how well we understand this relationship. I think the bottom line is that Borexino has a huge impact because of its importance in measuring the pp neutrinos. We can still do better, and so there's something left beyond Borexino. If you look at the underlying nuclear physics, for example, of this relationship, it's known to probably on the order of 1%. In addition, the solar luminosity is not known to a fraction of 1%. So in principle, we can continue to push this to see if there's any new physics hidden in this relationship at all, and I find that very interesting. The other issue that I think is really exciting today that has to do with the solar model is the composition of the solar core. When the sun was first formed, it came from a gas cloud, and that gas cloud, when it was contracting to form the sun, passed through a highly convective stage called the Hayashi phase. And during the Hayashi phase, there's a lot of mixing of the material, and so important to the standard solar model is the assumption that because we pass through the Hayashi phase, sun passed through the Hayashi phase, the material thoroughly was thoroughly mixed and therefore would be homogeneous. And that's why in the standard solar model, when the model is built, it's assumed that the outset of the sun is homogeneous. But then, over the past, over roughly 12 to 15 years, there's emerged something that's called the solar abundance problem, and it's basically the statement that the sun's metallicity can be measured in two ways and in two places, but the measurements today don't really agree at the right level of precision. You can measure metallicity in the photosphere by looking at the photo absorption lines, and they tend to give you somewhat low value for the metallicity. You can also measure it indirectly in the radiative zone through heliosismology. The sound speed is sensitive to the metallicity, and that tends to give a high value, and the answers disagree by something on the order of 25%, which is larger than what we expect from these two measurements. And I think the interesting underlying question is, how did the sun acquire its radiative core, and is there anything that happened that was interesting in the very early years of the standard solar model? So the sun actually, as the gas cloud collapsed through the Hayashi phase, it was completely convective. So although today the sun has a massive radiative core that contains about 98% of the sun, that was not this condition at the beginning, at the beginning of the main sequence. In fact, the radiative core grew from a point at the center of the sun outward over a period of about 28 million years, as kind of depicted here. And the boundary between the radiative core and the convective zone is really important because the convective zone constantly mixed, and so if you perturb the sun, the part of the sun that's being perturbed is in the convective zone. The radiative zone is basically, think of as chemically isolated from the rest of the environment, including the surface of the sun and the planets and anything else that might be going on in the solar system. So the chemical isolation of the solar core is because of the growth of the radiative cores, I think is a really important concept. And why, the connection that's happening is that when the solar system was formed, we may have gone through the Hayashi phase, but it's now increasingly clear that planetary formation can perturb metallicity in stellar systems, and particularly could have perturbed the primordial sun's composition. This is kind of an artist depiction that I took from an annual review about 10 years ago, what a typical photosolar disk looks like in a Titoris star like our young sun. And you find a great deal of dust and ices are isolated in this very thin disk. This is, this disk is formed after about 95% of the whole star is already there, the last 5% of the material plus the angular momentum is in the disk, that's why it's a disk, and then you see the accretion from this planetary disk onto the sun. And today, we're actually observing a lot about what that accretion gas looks like in various of these solar twins that we can examine. And so the thought is that there's a mechanism here that in principle could perturb our early sun because you're dumping on to the sun a gas that may be chemically different from the gas before it was processed by planetary formation, and in particular, that gas that appears to accrete on most of these solar-like stars appears to be depleted in metals. So this is the planet-forming region where a lot of the ices and dust are essentially swept out of the gas by the formation of the planets, and this is the pure gas that tends mostly hydrogen-helium dominated, that then winds up accretion onto the sun thereafter. And indeed, if you look at our planets, Jupiter and Saturn, and look at elements like the CNO elements, you find enhancements and abundances by factors of 4 to 8. So they are very effective in sweeping out those metals. And we were very interested in this problem 12 years ago, it's work that Otto Serenelli and I did, and there's also very nice independent work by Joyce Kuzick, exploring the same idea that maybe what's going on is that the surface of our sun was actually diluted by this kind of process, and so the experiments might be correct, the sun might have a higher metallicity in its core and its surface. I think it's an interesting idea. It's gotten more interesting in the last few years because of new observations that are being made of these solar twins. There was a really nice analysis of Gaia data of interdisc of 26 Titoris stars that was published a couple of years ago. They found very large depletions of carbon in the gas streams, so these were factors of 10 to 40. In a series of stars that they were able to observe. And they've also of uh the the theory has gotten much better. The I would call the first realistic modeling of the disappearance of volatile species from the gas phase. Uh, was recently done, included all the right physics, the radial drift. And they concluded that molecular species such as uh CO and CH are always depleted. Uh, by the by the chemistry of these discs. And I think that's another way of looking at Borisino. Borisino's first measurement of the CNO solar neutrinos is actually our first quantitative test. Of what the metallicity of the core is. And I think we really need that, a direct test of the of the metallicity of the core that we can compare. To the met to the photo absorption lines that we can see from the surface. So um the way we like to formulate this, Otto and I, we thought about this problem of how you'd like to combine experiments to. To really um to understand that metallicity is to is to use Borisino. As a test of the metals, but to use supercondomcondi as a thermometer of the solar core. Because if you change parameters in the solar model and you influence the temperature. Then you influence the CNO cycle neutrinos because they're very temperature dependent. But if you put the two experiments together, it's really lovely. Uh, this is a picture where all of the parameters in the solar model were varied by Aldo over their experimental ranges. But he looked at the correlation between the CNO neutrinos and the boron eight neutrinos. And you see this beautiful result and no matter what you do, you get this linear uh 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 correlation. That's much, much cleaner than the correlation you'd see in either of the two fluxes individually. So it means you can write this nice expression down here where there's a. On the left-hand side, there's the metal detector. That's Borisino's measurement of the CNO neutrinos. On the right-hand side, there's the thermometer, which is of um supercondomcondi's measurement of the of the boron eight temperature. And the parameter that determines the ratio between the two is the metallicity of the core. The fact that there's an additional linear metallicity dependence of CNO neutrinos. Because they're catalyzed by the carbon and nitrogen in the course. So Borisino's extraordinary effort has shown us that these CNO neutrinos are actually measurable. And so in principle, we can do this uh this measurement and do it quantitatively to directly determine the metallicity of the core. So I seem to be frozen here. But there we go. So I think a direct measurement of the metallicity of the core is probably uh the most important step we can take to. Uh, to fixing experimentally what the initial conditions are of our sun and therefore how we should build the standard solar model. So I think I'm I'm really uh 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 excited that Borisino's final measurement. Was to show that that this kind of determination of the metallicity was actually, it's actually possible. Another way of thinking about this entirely independent of any scenario that you might want to write down about the early history of the sun. Is if you want to go anywhere in our in our solar system, our solar environment. To try to find out what the conditions of the gas from which we all formed was really like. The earliest isolated sample of the of the primordial gas out of which we formed is that gas that's at the very center of the sun. And this is what Borisino is probing. So I think in terms of how fundamental the measurement is, there's nothing more important to determine about our uh about our origins uh. In the local environment of the sun than to characterize what that gas looks like at the very center of the sun. So I want to conclude by congratulating uh uh the Borisino collaboration. It's been a marvelous experiment, tremendous success. Yeah, uh as Professor Bellini said, there was a lot of skepticism, not only about Borisino, but about the entire field. And and I think it's wonderful how things have turned out. A great physics came out of this and that was is both uh. Um, has both impacted particle physics and astrophysics in a fundamental way. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we thank you for your talk and for the time. Considering the difference from Europe and California. So is there any question for uh Wick? So so while we wait for a question, I I I've been very pleased to see the remark. You have mentioned about these early papers from Alvarez and Davis because when I read them. They really long time ago point to the background sources then and then we have faced maybe decades after. So they they are very impressed. So I have a question uh uh for you. So concerning the discussion, so if I understand uh your uh point is that the. Uh, planet forming nebula i is depleted uh in in metals. And this may uh accrete the solar uh uh. Formation zone with uh a material depleted in carbon, for example. Is this a right understanding?
It is. I think there's a, you know, a really almost compelling evidence that that's now occurring from these Gaia measurements. How it affects the solar neutrino problem though is a is a more complicated question. Because of the fact that there's this thirty year period over which the conductive zone actually develops. Uh, you might do something quite violent to the carbon flow onto the sun. But if it occurs at an early time with conductive zone is still uh most of the mass of the sun. Then the observable effects, at least from solar neutrinos, will be small. But if occurs later, it could be larger. Uh, but I think, you know, so in a sense, almost independent of the solar neutrino problem. What you really want to do is measure that metallicity at the very core of the sun just as a number. Because it it should tell you, but what the it's the best estimate that we would have of the initial metallicity of that gas cloud. And so that then you can think about all sorts of things you might be able to do in astrophysics to compare that number. Uh, to what we're beginning to see from Gaia measurements and other observations of. Of of the fractionation that is apparently occurring in these Titorri discs. Um, that whatever happened in in these other stars appears to be fairly generic. Uh, the fact that the Gaia measurements of these twenty six stars saw the same same pattern over and over again. And is replicated by the theories that they now build to understand how the complicated chemistry of these uh. Uh, of these uh gas clouds wind up with the sequestering of carbon in the planets.
Okay, so uh. Is there any question from people attending uh from remote the meeting? So, okay, so if there is no question, then we thank you again, Wick, for your contribution to this meeting. So now we uh we have Jim Withmore. Jim, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so are you ready for your contribution?
Yeah, let me try sharing my screen.
To share your screen, yes.
Can you, can you see my screen?
Yes, yes, I can see your screen. We can see your screen and I think you also are in California.
I'm in California.
Oh, okay. So thank you for the effort.
Yeah, at least it's now daylight, so I can see what's going on.
Okay, so please go on.
Yeah, so uh as as some of you know, I had planned to actually come and be there present. I made reservations and then had to cancel it. I investigated the COVID nineteen requirements to get into Italy, but also to get back into the US and finally concluded it was just. It was just going to be too difficult, so I said I'll do it remotely. So I'm happy to be here remotely and. Let me go through some slides which I put together. Um. You'll see from my li initial slide here that I also got Brad Keister to weigh in on some of the efforts. And so he's have some comments from him here too. So uh, let me just remind you, Brad worked for the NSF from June nineteen ninety seven as its permanent program director. For experimental nuclear physics until he retired. He led the NSF activities on Borisino from June nineteen ninety seven and two thousand and six. I came at into the NSF two thousand and one to two thousand and four as a IPA. It's a temporary position. Uh, started working on astrophysics in the end of that period and then went back to my university for a year, then came back. Okay, from two thousand and six to twenty twenty one as a permanent program director for experimental particle astrophysics. And led the NSF activities for Borisino from two thousand and six until I retired this past June. Uh, let me just go very briefly through the NSF funding history, which actually has some of the similarities with Professor Bellini's talk. Uh, back in eighty six, I have a note that we had some discussion with Dr. Ragavant about BOREX. Uh, then in ninety one, there was discussion of the proposal for Borisino. Ninety one to ninety six, the counting test facility, we funded some of the construction and some operations and some of the people that work on it. Uh, nineteen ninety eight, we made an award to help the construction of the detector. Uh, two thousand nineteen ninety nine to two thousand, award for developing aspects of the calibration. Whose principal purpose was to measure the the Brilliant seven neutrino flux. Two thousand and two, an award to complete the commissioning and the construction phase of Borisino and begin taking data. Two thousand and five, an award to bring the detector operation into detector into operation. And then two thousand and seven, you started taking data in May and I found a science report. That you made a first result in August, which was just three or four months later. It was very impressive. So the total funding for NSF from nineteen ninety three to twenty twenty one was over thirty one million. This includes both construction costs as well as some personnel costs. For the three US groups. So some comments from Brad. I remember, this is Brad speaking. I can remember the earlier days of Borisino construction that represented the classic combination of challenges, rewards for physicists. Oops, sorry. Uh, classic combination of challenges, risks and rewards for physicists and agencies. When approaching scientific questions with very high potential impact. Borisino was proposed to NSF in the early nineties. The reviewers very much liked the idea of Borisino and its discovery potential at very low neutrino energies. But were sharply divided in their assessment whether record low levels of pseudocumin. Radio purity could ever be achieved. And this was also being referred to by Professor Bellini in in his talk. So a compromise was reached that NSF would help fund a smaller scale counting test facility. Whose goal was to demonstrate the technical feasibility. Collaboration achieved this and then came back to NSF with a proposal to move ahead with the full design. I think the Italian and German agencies had already approved their portions of the project. The expert reviews that we went through, as you know, NSF goes through an extensive review process of each proposal. The reviews were again split, perhaps not surprisingly, but in and at NSF, both physics and astronomy had to agree to sign on for it. So Brad says his first week in June nineteen ninety seven was a critical technical break, make or break review for Borisino. All agreed that the only way to know if it would work was to build it. Technical review went well and eventually both NSF decisions, physics and astronomy signed on. Then came the actual construction process. Borisino was not a standard construction project because there were so many elements that were simply not known at the outset. So some things took longer, some costs that hadn't been anticipated, but it moved ahead. Uh, Brad remembers almost annual visits to Borisino, watching the piece of the stainless steel sphere come together like a jigsaw puzzle. Then there was the ultra clean lab at Princeton where the nylon vessel was assembled. Then came the multipoint failure that led to the chemical spill in two thousand and two. There was now a question as to whether Borisino would be shut down. Let alone whether it would achieve the desired radio purity. But after several years, I think Professor Bellini mentioned it was a two-year process. Borisino got a reprieve and then progress became rapid. Uh, with the experiment back on, it was then a short sequence of steps to fill Borisino first with water and then with pseudocumin. And then take data. So this is Brad's last slide. In the meantime, Jim had taken over the program that included Borisino, so he was watching from the sidelines. His comment is that in the end, the naysayers were proven wrong and Borisino obtained very nice quantitative data. For the Brilliant seven solar neutrinos. And that, of course, was the basis for the original proposal. The group has now gone far beyond that with detection of neutrinos at even lower energies. In order to test more elements of the model for energy production in the sun. He Brad notes that I'm not in the best position to comment on the end game for Borisino, but I can remember the earlier days of Borisino construction. That represented the classic combination of challenges, risks and rewards for physicists and agencies. When approaching scientific questions with high potential impact. And he concludes, I was happy to have taken part in this experiment. So uh, one of the things in my title is what makes an experiment successful. And I think significant science results over a period of time. And I just picked four. There are many others and Professor Bellini has gone through many of those. I'll just pick four, the Brilliant seven solar neutrinos of two thousand and eight. PP solar neutrinos in twenty fourteen. Geon neutrinos in twenty twenty and then CNO neutrinos in November twenty twenty. So uh, the solar Brilliant seven, this of course was the original proposal for Borisino. Who measured the Brilliant seven and here you see it, the your your experiment. Concluded that the the hypothesis of no oscillations for Brilliant seven is inconsistent at the four sigma level. And here you see the uh red curve is the Brilliant seven. Data were collected from two thousand and seven to April two thousand and eight. My second choice was the PP neutrinos, made several breakthroughs in the measurements of solar neutrinos since it started thirty years ago. In completing, including this first complete measurement of the PP neutrinos that produced ninety nine percent. Of the proton-proton fusion processes we've heard from Wick. Uh, the CNO are the remaining one percent. And I think this was a very nice result uh that you had back in twenty fourteen in Nature. Third one was on G neutrinos, which was a FISRED D in twenty twenty. These are the electron anti-neutrinos produced by decays of long-lived isotopes, uranium and thorium chains. From December two thousand and seven to April twenty nineteen, you observed fifty three geon neutrinos. Found the radiogenic heat from uranium and thorium in the mantle to be twenty four point six terawatts. And the total radiogenic heat of the earth to be thirty eight point two terawatts. You also made a an upper limit on the number of events from the hypothetical geo-reactor at the center of the earth concluding. Its existence with a power greater than two point four terawatts has been excluded at the ninety five percent confidence level. Uh, my file, the last uh highlight or significant results of obviously is your most recent one. That is the CNO neutrinos that was published in Nature in November of last year. Uh, obviously, as as people have already said, the measurement of the CNO cycle is an important discovery for the hypothesis that this cycle is the dominant process. That lights up massive stars. And then the metallicity of the sun refers to the fraction of solar mass residing in elements heavier than helium. And is a fundamental diagnostic of the sun's evolution. So you quoted in a Nature paper that you have the direct detection of neutrinos in the solar CNO cycle. Uh, it paves the way to understanding the solar metallicity problem, which Wick referred to. Understanding the low Z. Low metallicity and the high Z metallicity, which come from different models, which Wick also described. Uh, a conclusion, I think, was your experimental observation confirms the overall solar picture. And shows that with future experimental improvements, a direct measurement of the metallicity of the sun's core could be within reach. So here here's the plot that you showed in your Nature paper and you can see from the sort of the red, the. Purple color is the high Z metallicity solution and the blue is the low one. And clearly the high Z one is is the the low hypothesis disfavored that two sigma. So that's an indication. Obviously, you've taken more data since then. So let let me just go through, a lot of this is stuff you know, but I think uh many of the NSF people were involved in. Working on this project. And so I wanted to just describe a little bit of the effort that went into it. Uh, in order to do the CNO neutrinos, the main source of background was the two-ten bismuth. Uh, and so you started an effort to make an independent measurement of this with secular equilibrium in the decay chain. It's very easy to measure the two-ten polonium, which is used to use pulse discrimination. And you found that in the very central region of Borisino, that is within a radius of less than three meters. You could make a very good, very sensitive measurement. Because you wanted to make sure that only the decay is from the two-ten bismuth that come in the middle of the detector. So data were collected in phase three, which I think is July of twenty sixteen up until February twenty twenty. Um, you went to to achieve this, the following actions were taken, a comprehensive thermal mapping. You installed a thermal equilibrium insulation system on the outside. That was May to December twenty fifteen. You put probes to monitor the detector. You put probes to monitor the detector within the heating zones. This was completed in twenty sixteen. An active system to control the seasonal motion changes of the air temperature in Hall C was installed in twenty nineteen. And then you you using these systems, you were able to reduce the since later convective currents in twenty twenty. So I think this is the plot that shows that. So I think it's very impressive that if you look on the far right-hand side. You see that the temperature levels in all of these different. Monitors, which is shown on the left-hand side are extremely flat, indicating you've got a very, very stable. Condition for taking the collecting the data which you did to to get your C N A neutrinos. So uh, other success indicators, obviously, apart from the publications that you've had is some recent honors. Uh, you were awarded, you were listed in the top twenty twenty top ten physics world. For your C N O work and then you got the Kokoni Prize in twenty twenty-one for your. C N O neutrinos. So I think you've been a very, very successful experiment. As indicated by both your publications and of course, these two. Uh, to these two awards. So. Uh, NSF's involvement over the years, uh, over the thirty years, it contributed thirty-one million in construction and scientist report support. C N O measurement only became possible with understanding the convection currents. And the temperature stabilization in both the detector and in Hall C. I my understanding is that the NSF-supported scientists have been instrumental in this activity. Working on the temperature stability. And also working with the L N G S staff and others to complete these activities. And being involved in the analysis. So my summary, with its discovery of neutrino from the C N O cycle in the sun and its previous measurements of the P P cycle neutrinos. Borexino has completely unraveled the two processes powering the sun. Those of us at NSF who've been involved in the Borexino collaboration with to express our admiration. For succeeding in a very complex and challenging experiment. We congratulate your collaboration on achieving these very important astrophysics results. We feel honored to have helped you in your success. And we look forward to your final analysis when all of your newer data have been included and maybe a more impressive or more accurate. Determination of the metallicity. So I'd like to thank you and say well done to your collaboration.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Thank you very much. Uh, is there any question for Jim? Also from people attending from remote. Well, I I have a a um. Something that I noticed during your speech. After two thousand and two, I do remember the the commitment by NSF in. In proceeding, in proceeding with Borexino, this is something that was very important. Because together with the Gran Sasso Laboratory, an effort was done and NSF was. Committed on that and Frank was pushing also for some. You know, outreach activity to just uh, reestablish also a good relationship with the surrounding community. So this, I have noticed that you have mentioned that, I do recall this important step.
Yeah, I I think, yeah, I I think we mentioned it, Brad and I, I think felt it was important to at least to comment on the fact that it had happened. Um, on the other hand, you 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 got through that hurdle and were very, very successful afterwards, so. Uh, I don't know that we at NSF did very much other than stand by and listen and watch intently as process went on. But we were glad to see it happen.
I I have also question, not a question.
Gianpaolo.
Yes, I would like to say that uh. I don't know if you, Jim, was already responsible for for Borexino. But I I remember that in, I think, two thousand and two or something like that. Uh, I was at NSF with Luciano Maiani. And I think there was also Frank, I don't remember who was also, uh, John Bacall. And I think that this was really the the more important meeting. In order that NSF finally decided to fund Borexino. And this was also due to the relations already existing between NSF and. Uh, again, the N F N. Because in F N, NSF were doing other experiment, I think one also in Fermilab and something else. I remember this, I don't know if this is correct, Jim.
Yeah, yeah, that that was a little bit before I, my involvement in Borexino was really around two thousand and five. Uh, two thousand and four and then two thousand and six. So what happened before that is mostly from Brad Keister's activities.
Well, also, uh, any other question? Because also I'd like to remember because Eugenio Coche is here and he he has been director for a number of years. And he also, you were very supportive of Borexino. Before we restarted completely the activity and starting data taken in two thousand and seven. So also, thank you for this, Eugene.
Yeah, no, you know, we we we, you know, as as I said, we review your proposals very, very carefully and. It's been a pleasure to to be able to fund them because they reviewed well. And so that's that's how we proceed. So congratulations on where you are.
Okay, so thank you. If there are no other questions, then we have a break for.
So I think that we can start. Uh, we start the second part of this afternoon with. Uh, a set of talks centered on physics. Uh, related Borexino achievements. The first speaker is our old friend Francesco. Bisani, that we speak about the fundamental physics of Borexino from your point of view, if I understand correctly. So we will be are very eager to to know what you think of us. So please, Francesco.
Grazie. So thank you, thank you. And I'm really honored to be here for this very important meeting, this important occasion with so many friends and colleagues. So uh, this is will be a recollection with the, in fact, as Joachim told, the emphasis on say personal views. And so I think that Giabbolo made an admirable resume of achievement. I would say that when we come to publications on the scientific output of Borexino. The beginning is about twenty years ago with C T F, which did. Uh, enabled immediately exploration of some speculative physics issues. These were very interesting because of potential relevance for so-called fundamental question. This is going to be an important word for this talk, as you will see. But also the feeling since the beginning, it was that this was mostly warm-up exercise, real issue since the beginning. It was known to be in fact exploration of of the neutrino mass possibly and of the sun. So this was continued in fact with Borexino. And these are a few publications that were issued in the course of the years. And as you can see, the point in my view is that when we put it together with the big achievement, the important achievement that we all know. Uh, we see that Borexino was very balanced in in the scientific goals. And was not somehow unbalancing the the important goal with the other one, but succeeded in both. So and here we are beginning with say the personal recollection, this is my me in in twenty years ago, just here. So I was just presenting a talk for Opera, in fact. It was about neutrinos and the future perspective. I was arguing that we should be fast with the Opera, otherwise this would have borne hold. And I think I was not completely wrong in that. So now we are here in another occasion, a bit sadder because. And let me however, begin with say, what were my opinions by the time at the time? So one of the first papers I issued here was an analysis with the global analysis of the data available. Uh, at the time, trying to check whether, say, future experiments. And in particular, Kamland and Borexino will be able to to nail down the solution of solar neutrino. And our opinion with Alessandro Strumia, my say friend in Qatar, was that. Uh, whatever was the reason of the so-called anomaly, solar neutrino anomaly, this would be solved. I mean, if the the point was a three-flavor oscillation, I mean, regular neutrinos. Then this was enough to to understand the parameter and the colored area were projection. Or future experiment for various points, which could fit the data at the time. So in a sense, the the program, the scientific problem worldwide was well focused. So instead, this is even somehow stranger, this is a theoretical paper. So once in my life, I'm talking of theory, so I'm a theorist in fact, in principle, but. Uh, I use it to collaborate a lot with friends in experiments and so, but this is a paper on theory. So and we somehow with this paper, I argued, I argued that. The most likely possibility to explain the data available twenty years ago. Uh, predicted, say, large mixing angle solution, a big value of theta one three. Uh, of the order of Cabibbo angle and M, the mass relevant to, that would be the decay relatively large. So this point in fact was much more trivial than it could sound, it's not any magic. So the point was that at the time, it was already known that the there was a big angle, that is atmospheric one. Uh, then the if you just play, say, dice, if you use random generator for the parameter that you do not know. The most likely outcome is that even the other angle are large. So somehow it was very simple, but in fact, not misleading a point. So I was very much somewhat confident in that. So then I used a parameter that I found in my model to calculate. What was the survival probability of electron neutrino? It was two thousand and three. So this is what eventually was called oscillogram. It is used regularly for high-energy neutrinos, proliferation, sorry, but you see, this is just the same as as it is in with the real parameters. So somehow I was confident in theoretical model. Then we also made with Alessandro and a few PhD student, Marco Girelli. It was a student by the time, Lingudo Marandella, an analysis of sterile neutrino. And we came to the conclusion that if you take seriously the hypothesis that there is fourth neutrino. So and you define and then take the world data, you don't see any evidence for sterile neutrino. And this was confirming, so it was the first global analysis, in my understanding. It was a fine work previously by other colleagues, but it was not contradicting and eventually. This was my point. So somehow my take home, so somehow any theorist has to have its own compass. So somehow the something which guides him or her for its research. So somehow the point was that I fall, I I felt that the hypothesis of neutrino was reasonable. The property were sufficiently known. It is not unlikely that it was larger. I do not see any strong reason to insist on looking for sterile neutrino. And then it seems that the the fundamental physics context in which we work, that is because. Neutrino selection is an issue of fundamental physics, in fact, the only one which gives evidence that the standard model is not a complete theory. Uh, was on the way to be clarified, no? This had immediately an important, a severe implication for Borexino. That we could use then Borexino for the original goal, that is studying the sun. It was possible to study other sources of neutral neutrino. And in fact, this last point, even if luck would ever serve us. Uh, this channel for neutrino scattering on protons would be a very important point to give us a reference. Uh, information on on supernova neutrino study, which is very uncertain topic. Now in two thousand and seven, this paper, which there is, there was a debate that maybe some of you will still remember. This was a debate between cosmologists and particle physicists. On the one hand, there was Simon White, who somehow was arguing that the call for. Uh, for an exclusive, say, commitment in in cosmological constant studies was dangerous for astronomy. So he simply said that astronomy is a rich science and it's okay somehow to study also. A cosmological constant, but we should not do only that as other community were somehow asking. And in response, Edward Kolbe somehow replied with this other paper. Where he said that there are thousand invisible cords binding astronomy and the energy, which is certainly fair. And in a sense, this was a nice way of somehow concluding or or somehow putting a point to this discussion. Two thousand and seven, as Gianpaolo recalled, was also the last difficulty of Borexino. And indeed, in soon, the the first paper appeared and was eventually. Yeah, published this crucial paper on brilium seven neutrino. There was a meeting here, there were a couple of them, in fact, most of you probably participated, which was a debate. Somehow on solar neutrino and and I was invited for a summary talk and I. Recalled the word of John Bacall also for a couple of reasons. So one was there. So people like to talk about multidisciplinary science. We call astroparticle, multimessenger, something. But nobody wants that money comes from its own disciplinary budget. So somehow this is in a sense, is a claim that if we want to do, say, an enterprise like Borexino or astrophysics. Basically, we should do it somehow with the somehow feeling. So not only somehow talk about that, but we should invest energies. And I think that is something that should be done somehow with the understanding the what is needed, you know? And on the other hand, I found at the time, there was already an important statement by International Astronomical Union. Where instead the the recognition of the importance of multimessenger was already clear in two thousand and ten. So you see the statement there, no? So astronomers have to use all kind of radiation, so from cosmic ray to neutrino. I mean gravitational waves are still not mentioned, but they they now they are certainly are. And you see neutrino are explicitly mentioned. So somehow some communities, in particular astronomical one. Were somehow aware of the importance of this enterprise already. So in two thousand and eleven, thanks to somehow the idea of Francesco Villanueva. Uh, we wrote a paper that I think it was one of the most important papers I wrote. Uh, on, which is in a sense, is the beginning of this enterprise, which eventually. Uh, you you crowned it with the success and Francesco will talk of that. And can do it much better than me. But two thousand and eleven was also set here for for the lab because you certainly remember this story of superluminal neutrinos. Now, I thought thought a lot about that, no? And I think that this is not only an experimental problem, I even told it here in front to some colleagues. Uh, because I think that there was behind this this somehow researches. Where say the first paper you see there from Glashow and 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 Coleman, two of the best theorists ever. However, this paper is claiming that any particle has its own velocity, no? So electrons has its own limiting velocity, neutrino has its own limiting velocity. Now, this is this paper, I never understood somehow, somehow the the feeling, the the idea behind. But I know that there were phenomenological motivations, in particular, a gas a finding, which were not able to find. which were not able to find JZK cutoff, there was even another paper by Gonzalez Mestres before Glashow, but this is another story. However, due to this paper, which is very influential, people were led to check velocity of neutrinos, and as you know, because of a mistake, they thought that neutrinos were superluminal. Eventually, we pointed out with the theory group there, Massimo Manarelli, Francesco Villante, that you cannot have neutrino faster than light in pyrene production at CERN, because this is, pyrene production works because of relativity of Einstein. At Borexino checked the velocity and found that the effect was not there, and eventually, the paper was corrected. So another point, which I find a bit hectic, is that this paper of Glashow and Coleman has the big hip hop citations, just as opera, while the paper of Borexino, which somehow checked, somehow found the mistake, has much less, and my paper is almost unnoticed. I think that, however, this is explainable, because I recently read the history of philosophy of Bertrand Rast, and he explains when some of the, the wrong ideas are much more exciting than the, somehow, the right one, and this is, we should be aware of. Now, in the same year, I had a great pleasure and honor to serve as PhD coordinator in new astroparticle physics program, and I had the honor of meeting young, talented people like Simone, Ilya, Shufong, and Daniele, that you see in these photos, Shufong and Daniele are doing the interview for the position. And a few years later, they, together with their advisor, among them were Joachino, Nicola, Matteo Agostini, Aldo, Aldo Gianni, they prepared these beautiful PhD texts, which were important for the subsequent development. In the meantime, I was still working on Borexino physics, and I was in love with Borexino, as the old song used to say, it's not California dreaming, but supernova dreaming, unfortunately, it was not there, but we checked that Borexino would do great if a supernova was, was somehow exploding in our galaxy. The next episode of the story is something happening to Italian community, it's What Next? So it is a meeting that Italians certainly remember, this is the first edition, and it was, first of all, it was a general meeting, so the whole community of INFN scientists was called to discuss, however, the emphasis was not only somehow on fundamental interaction, but was just uniquely on fundamental interaction. This, in my feeling, was, was a bit of a danger, because some of the community, the scientific community working in INFN is very much rich and diversified, for instance, people in Pisa, they contributed to gravitational wave, we are doing a neutrino astronomy, et cetera, et cetera, and the emphasis only on fundamental interaction, in my view, could be overbearing. And the meeting was in the San Thomas Aquinas Hall in Rome, which is a difficult place to talk. However, I tell you why I will, I insisted on this point. So however, in the first day of this What Next? meeting, there were discussions also on issues which concern us, in particular, one discussion was about neutrinos, and another one was on cosmic radiation. So and let me show you some slides from this discussion. So this is neutrino group, I was not there, I was not participating in this discussion, and this is report, and as you see, there is a lot of somehow excitement on the fact that neutrino oscillation were clarified, that neutrino masses were understood. However, you see, not here, neither elsewhere in this, in this presentation, there is a single word on astrophysical issues, solar neutrino, EPE, or CNO. I think that although this is in the context of the meeting, this was somehow something which was worrying me, and I was sort of aware of this kind of problem. In fact, I asked to join the other group, cosmic radiation, and then, as you see, I insisted a bit on the importance of CNO. By the way, I also asked my friends at neutrino, say, group, and I told guys, there is CNO, and they say, but CNO is not useful to measure neutrino parameter. I said, gosh. So I really felt bad. So somehow, it's okay to think too fundamental issue, but you should be aware of what somehow an experiment is doing anyhow. So we, we made the statement on CNO neutrino in this meeting, we speak of fundamental abundance, which was already remarked by Bacall and other people. Then this is the conclusion of the talk, and in this talk, I explicitly cited the paper of Rocky Kolbe, when I said that there are these thousand invisible cords, or strings or ropes, which link astronomy and physics, no? And I made, you see there, there are the various Nobel Prize which were gained because of, say, this kind of research, including the astronomer who got Nobel Prize for cosmological constant, then there are the issues gamma rays, supernovae, and supernova neutrino. My statement in English reads like that, so somehow, so our suggestion, so I wrote it myself, this somehow, I take responsibility of this statement, which is a bit harsh, but I think it was clear, so we should use the hundred thousand cords of Kolbe for advantage, not for damage, for damaging gas. So somehow, and I think that, I mean, even if this is not the, probably, the epitome of political correctness, it was clear, the message that we should respect the field. So this problem, indeed, the problem that I perceived, you see my face, I was worried, this is exactly how I felt, and I don't know who showed this photo, but this is really how I felt, that I was invited at CERN for a talk in a meeting on neutrinos, and they asked me to discuss, to explain why solar neutrino is over. So I was in full disagreement with that. I understood precisely the point, they were just telling that solar neutrino is interesting for neutrino masses, and this is solved because of Kamland, et cetera. But I was not in favor of that, because solar neutrino is not only neutrino masses. So I gave the talk, I think I convinced these colleagues, I even wrote a paper on a journal that our friend Vladimir Tretja, who is publishing, and my point was so trivial, I just told them, you see, this is the possibility, there are only few experiment which are able on measuring and distinguishing the single component of neutrino flux, and only Borexino covers the region fully, and only Borexino has a chance of measuring the various components. Now, this is so simple, but it was not understood previously, there are two versions of the plot, I hope you like one of them, one of them is also in Wiki. So then, in the same year, so in fact, Joachino asked me a question, that is, how do you feel with, with, say, super K claim that maybe MSW paradigm does not work as we expect? So I just did, basically, the same exercise that was presented previously, using the data obtained by Borexino, the first three data, PP, beryllium, and PP, along with, no, so I did not use super cameo candy, I did not use Kamland. And eventually, the point which was indicated by the global fit was just sitting over the global minimum of the total analysis, while the one, the black one down there is super K, so it's not serious problem. And eventually, I'm very happy that it was eventually somehow changed in subsequent analysis. So somehow, Borexino was indicating also right direction for what concerns neutrino masses. I continued a bit to write, so this was a chapter of a book on neutrino astronomy, and I insisted a lot on the importance of, say, in particular, Borexino. So this is the paper that Wick kindly cited with Diego Veskovy, another student of PhD that I had the honor to meet, we recalculated things, and somehow, this was basically my contribution. So I was, in fact, so happy that in the occasion of the Neutrino 2018 meeting, I showed my sympathy toward Borexino, and everybody agreed. So I mentioned many times in the summary talk, Borexino, and nobody complained, and in fact, there, people liked very much this statement, which might seem naive, but it's not. So that is, that an important principle to respect is science first. So theory and experiment are goals, are tools to accomplish this goal, but publishing you another paper, or making another experiment, just to do experiment, is not the same as doing a good science. So this is the reason why I'm very happy that Joachino asked me to make a claim for the last report for, for Borexino in 2019, and I insisted with this historical point that now, I think we appreciate. So my summary, where we are today, so in my feeling. So I think that if the goal of research is to do good science, Borexino really has achieved it full, in my view, this is the best experiment we ever had in, here, in Gran Sasso Lab, and we know the achievement, that it has attained it. So I think that this is of interest for many communities, so stellar physics, theoretical astrophysics, nuclear physics, and even to general public. So I, I prepared this, say, popular account, and I send it to our friends in Frascati, and I realized that this description of the sun is one of the most interesting, the most appreciated point in INFN. So Borexino also did something on fundamental physics, beginning, of course, with oscillations, but putting it in the correct perspective, and I think this was really a reason of success. So my conclusion is that, in my view, so it might look funny, but I think that what we experienced at Borexino reminds some stories of, say, years ago, like adventure, full of jungles, wonders, dangers, losses, but also somehow fitted in vision, dedication, courage, and happy endings. So I was so happy to travel with you, and I would like to do even more, but now, it's not the matter of doing more, but of celebrating, even though I think that you can do little bit more, and I really wish it will work. Thanks. Thank you, Francesco, for this nice talk with your recollections and views, very interesting views about Borexino, and thank you also for your persistent friendship to the experiment. So there are questions for Francesco, even from remotely, Francesco Villante.
Just a comment on the 2011 paper, because contrary to what you're saying, I will not discuss it in my presentation, that will be focused on, on solar physics.
Francesco, not, not superluminal neutrino.
Yes, no, that, that paper written in collaboration with you and Aldo was, the paper where, and also Giulia and Francesco Lombardi, was the paper where we suggested originally to use polonium, to look at the time evolution of polonium to infer, to infer the bismuth. And actually, since we are recollecting, I was also discussing before with Nicola, after the presentation of this paper at Fisano in 2012, a year at the Lux, in a dinner at Isola del Gran Sasso with Franco Calaprese, it was decided to create, where I was invited, it was decided to create the first small CNO working group, and it is where, basically, my collaboration with Borexino started, and I'm very happy of this, and so.
Thank you, Francesco. So there are other comments? Aldo?
Francesco, first of all, thank you for your long-standing support and collaboration. I have, I'd like to have your comment. We have discussed in the past, this, you know, this tension between, on delta n squared, between Kamland and solar global fit, which is now shrinking, and so, what do you see in this direction? I mean, that is what we expected, but do you think there is an effort planned for, in particular, super cameo candy and hyper K on the improving the understanding of this transition, and also maybe improving the, at this point, I would say, the agreement between the anti-neutrino and neutrino? So what is your opinion about that?
Yeah, I mean, concerning history, I told, basically, no? Somehow this, somehow, this super K is the most important experiment in the field, perhaps, and still, in that occasion, it was Borexino, in a sense, to indicate the right path, no? So this is, this is, I think, my take home for this previous event. So in a sense, what was indicated by the analysis of Borexino was just in the right direction. Now, of course, it's worthwhile to search for that, to continue to study, or even Gianpaolo mentioned this kind of thing, in particular, he mentioned this possibility of a new interaction, which was in fact remarked by Esteban Roulet 30 years ago, this so-called non-standard interaction, or other things which could somehow change, and I probably, I also have the plot, not somehow, this, okay, this one, for instance, is the paper with Alessandro, that is, if you have a cunningly devised stray neutrino, it could go and change exactly the point where you want to change the shape. Still, I'm not so excited in this somehow possibility, just because I do not have stronger theoretical reason to believe in that. So I say, it's okay, let's do it, it's, the shape of boron is related to nuclear physics, which is not that easy, Bacall insisted on that, there could be even fundamental issues behind, maybe, but I mean, I would do it with quite, quite mind, like, like you did in the scientific studies you had already, somehow, don't accelerate, basically. Thank you. Other issues, comments, questions?
Excuse me, I have a...
Yes, please, Gianpaolo.
No, the question, Francesco, is the following, you know that among the different hypotheses on the sterile neutrino, there is the one, Alexei Smirnov, concerning low mass sterile neutrinos, one or two sterile neutrinos. It seems to me that now this hypothesis is completely abandoned. I ask you this because I remember that this hypothesis can influence the transition region of the PE. You, what is your, your point of view?
So Gianpaolo, so this is just the slide I was showing, I don't know if, say, our colleague can show it. So somehow, you see, that these are just some example of a parameter, and mixing hypotheses of stray neutrino with the other neutrinos, with the regular one, and you see, you can distort in any manner you want the shape of the, of the survival probability. So of course, I mean, if you, in principle, yes, I mean, and if you have some neutrino which is solely somehow acting in that somehow context, and is not visible in lab experiment, I mean, you have to search it there, so this is no discussion. So I mean, the possibility is there, so somehow, at the border of what we know, there is what we do not know. It's that simple. So I don't have anything, so just, my point is that I do not have somehow a theoretical reason to believe in this kind of parameter. So I say, it could be so, but it just, I mean, the reason why I was a bit somehow, not downgrading, but somehow answering Aldo in the manner I did, is just that I believe we should be aware of somehow... is just that I believe we should be aware of somehow the fact that this kind of investigation will take time and somehow what will be motivation. Somehow we should collect, we should have a good idea. I will not take it like, I don't know, a red flag to fall over because, I mean, this is certainly so. So it just, it's a possibility, but I cannot defend it in the sense, I just can say phenomenologically it is possible. I cannot say more.
Okay, thank you. Thank you Francesco.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so thank you Francesco. So there is a comment from Andrea, a question from Andrea.
I'd like to thank you for the nice talk and ask you a provocative question. Will it continue to be as adamant about this topic with future experiments? There's an experiment planned in China. And there's, of course, no plus that in principle could still decide to do this science. And since you have had such a success at being an advocate for this science, I wonder if you're, if you still have energy to do that?
I'm very sympathetic, I mean, in that, so somehow, but please understand me, Andrea. Living in a lab, so somehow it was my dream to be here, so basically, when I was in university. And I am so happy to participate in this enterprise with some brilliant colleagues who did such a nice thing. So then, still, I think this is good science. And if somebody will be at the level of Borexino, we can do better. Certainly, it could be a good idea. I remember, so I do not know anything about this South American experiment. They want to have something Borexino bigger, but I do not know whether this will any go or just some dream. But also somehow a big experiment with another techniques, like with lots of Nobel liquids, which are very clean. This could also do the job. So certainly, I believe this is important. By the way, let me say a point that is very trivial. For somehow, I mean, this kind of thing, we can explain so easily to general public, no? So we are in a sense acquainted to the point of telling you we are studying some mysterious particle which we never find. So we can say, we studied the sun. We understood how the sun worked. We have seen the engine of the sun, just as we see our bones inside our body with X-rays thanks to neutrinos. So it's so somehow beautiful and so neat that I believe that this kind of thing we should say more. Okay, so I think thank you again Francesco. So let's thank Francesco again. Now we move to our other Francesco, our friend, which is Francesco Villante. Your talk is about the role of Borexino in solar physics.
Ditemi voi se si sente, si sente? Si sente? Ancora la mascherina? Come preferite? Se non si sente, fatemi un segno, mi tocca la mascherina. Si è accesa una... Stai elaborando qualcosa, tanto? Okay, so it's a great pleasure for me to be here to discuss the role of Borexino in solar physics. Fortunately for you and unfortunately for me, some of the points that I will discuss have been already touched in the very beautiful talk by Professor Vic Axton. Now, the sun, being so close to us, can be observed through a variety of different methods, by using different messengers, no? It can be, for example, observed in the traditional way by looking at the radiation which is emitted by the photosphere. But we can also infer the properties of the solar core by looking at the neutrinos which are produced by nuclear reaction in its interior. Or we can study the structure of the sun through heliosismology, the study of non-radial solar oscillation. As a result of this, we have a redundancy of observational information. And so the sun is an over-constrained system which can be used to test stellar evolution and also as laboratory for fundamental physics. Now, from the theoretical point of view, our comprehension of the interior of the sun is based on the so-called standard solar model. This term was coined by Bacol in '69. The standard solar model is a spherical model of the sun, which is based on a solution of stellar structure equation integrated over a solar lifetime, four point fifty-seven giga-year, which is based on a chemical evolution paradigm according to which the sun was born as chemically homogeneous. And then it has evolved its chemical composition only due to nuclear reaction and elemental diffusion. And then, which is based, it is based clearly on the correct description of the properties of the solar plasma, in particular, the solar opacity, the equation of state of the solar matter and the determination of the cross-section for hydrogen burning in the sun. Now, the important point to stress is that solar models have no free parameters because they are known quantities which are necessary to define the model, which are the mixed length. The mixed length is the parameter which controls the efficiency of external convective energy transfer in the sun. And the chemical composition of the initial homogeneous ZAMZ model can be fixed by requiring that the prediction for the present sun reproduce few observational properties which are well-determined, namely the solar radius, the solar luminosity and the metal abundance at the surface of the sun. As a result of this, of this procedure, which is called the calibration procedure, the standard solar model is fully predictive. And so its prediction, its validity can be falsified by independent observation. In this respect, the possibility to study the sun through solar neutrinos, after the suggestion of David Samba Col, and also the possibility to test the structure of the sun by heliosismology, so by looking at solar oscillation, which were originally discovered in the '60s and then interpreted as standing acoustic waves, is extremely important. And basically, as the continuous improvement in standard solar model description and also the description of constitutive physics for solar models was triggered during the last decades by solar neutrino data and heliosismology. Okay. Heliosismology, to give some more details, is the study of non-radial solar oscillation. Several thousand different modes of oscillation have been detected. Their frequencies have been determined with very high accuracy. And the information encoded in the measured frequencies can be used to determine some important properties of the sun by using an inversion procedure which is based on linearization around a known solar model. We are able to infer from heliosismology in particular the sound speed profile of the sun, so the behavior of the sound speed as a function of the radius in the interior of the solar structure, and some properties of the external convective envelope. In particular, the depth of the convective region, we obtain this value, and the abundance of idium in the external convective layer of the sun. Idium is uniform in the external region due to convective mixing, and it has this value. Till a few years ago, there was an impressive agreement between a standard solar model prediction and observational properties of the sun inferred by heliosismology. You can see by comparing the number reported here and here. I will go back later to the meaning of this acronym GS98. And also by looking at this plot, where we see the sound speed as a function of the solar radius. So basically, here I'm plotting the fractional difference between the sound speed inferred from heliosismic frequencies and the sound speed predicted by standard solar model. And you see that there is a very good agreement almost everywhere in the solar structure. The situation changed a few years ago because there was a systematic re-analysis of the solar surface composition, which is a fundamental input for standard solar model construction and which is determined with spectroscopic techniques. But the basic point is that there are no mechanisms to produce or destroy metals inside the sun. And so as a consequence of this, the sun is nearly homogeneous in metals. So there is just a small difference between the central and the surface value, which is due to elemental diffusion, okay? So if we change the metal abundance at the surface, we are forced to change the metal abundance in the entire solar structure with potentially observable consequences. Now, the new determinations of abundances were based on improved technique, both for what concerned the modalization of the solar atmosphere and interpretation of the data. And the situation is reported in this table as a function of time and also considering different authors. Here, I showed in the logarithmic astronomical scale for the abundances the value which are obtained for elements which are most relevant for standard solar model construction. The situation is, I mean, it's still not completely clear, but there is a general consensus with the new determination are lower with respect to the previous one. It is, we usually take as a reference to compilation, the old one, the Gravelsens from Val98, and the new and more recent one from Asfurnan collaborator in 2009. We refer to this as Iz and Loz composition. And by comparing these two compositions, you see that it exists a relevant difference for important element, like for example, carbon, nitrogen and oxygen. Oxygen, for example, in the new compilation is forty percent lower than before, okay? These compilations are taken as a reference. By no means this implies that one of the two should be the correct one. In principle, the physical reality could be in the middle or correspond to, no? Okay. But they are useful if we want to test our result, okay? Now, why do we care about metals in the construction of a standard solar model or solar model? The total mass abundance, the total number abundance of metals is negligible. And as a consequence of this, they give a negligible contribution to the equation of state of the solar plasma. Nevertheless, they are relevant in determining the opacity of the solar plasma. The opacity is basically a measure of the interaction of radiation with matter in the plasma. And it's the parameter which controls the efficiency of radiative energy transfer in the sun. We see from this plot that metal accounts for about fifty percent of the total opacity at the center of the sun. This contribution is even larger in the external radiative region, is equal to about eighty percent with contribution from several elements like silicon, oxygen, iron, etc., etc., okay? If we change the metal abundance in the sun, we change the opacity profile of the sun, so we change the temperature stratification. And so we get a different, for example, central temperature for the sun and observable consequences for the solar structure. In addition to this, the abundance of CNO element also control, as we'll discuss later, the efficiency of CNO cycle for hydrogen fusion. Now, the problem with the new abundances is that the downward revision which was obtained leads to standard solar model which do not correctly reproduce heliosismic observable. Now, this is shown in this plot, where we give the situation with the sun speed for the solar model implementing the old Iz abundance and the new Loz composition. And it can be also seen by comparing the value inferred from heliosismology for surface idium and depth of the convective region with the prediction obtained in standard solar model implementing different composition. This problem is basically saying us that there is something wrong or unaccounted in solar model. And here is a list of possible solutions. I will not comment in detail. You can, you can ask me if you are interested. It can be related to abundant determination itself, to the proper description of the properties of solar matter or to the standard mechanism in fundamental physics or astrophysics. But the perspective which I want to give you is that this problem is testing our comprehension of the sun with potential implication for stellar astrophysics and fundamental physics. Now, in this context, the information which can be provided by neutrinos are extremely important. We know that neutrinos are produced in the sun because the sun is powered by nuclear reaction that transfers hydrogen into idium-4. The overall effect is reported here. For each idium-4 nucleus which is produced, a given amount of energy is emitted in the plasma and two electron neutrinos are produced that then free stream through the solar structure and reach the Earth in eight minutes. The specific mechanism through which hydrogen fusion is obtained are the PP chain, which is the dominant one. It's responsible for about ninety-nine percent of the total energy neutrino production. And it has different determination, PP1, PP2 and PP3, whose relative branching depends on the temperature of the solar core. And then we have the CNO cycle, which is sub-dominant and which is, which uses carbon, nitrogen and oxygen nuclei which are present in the core of the sun as catalyst for hydrogen fusion. The CNO cycle is responsible for about one percent of the total neutrino and energy budget. Nevertheless, it's a fundamental process in astrophysics because it's the dominant mechanism in a star more massive than the sun or for star with solar masses in more advanced stage of evolution. Here I show the solar neutrino spectrum calculated according to the latest standard solar model. The black line are the component of the solar neutrino flux which are obtained within the PP chain. So the PP neutrinos, beryllium, PEP, boron and HEP neutrinos. In parenthesis, we have the theoretical uncertainties in the calculation. While instead, the blue line and the red line correspond to neutrinos produced, neutrino components produced within the CNO cycle. Here we have the conventional CNO neutrinos produced by beta decay processes. And in addition of this, we also display the electron capture CNO neutrino produced by electron capture reaction. Superimposed to this spectrum, I show very schematically also the energy range which have been probed by the different experiment. At high energy, we have the water sharenkov and heavy water sharenkov detector have provided an high accuracy determination of the boron component. Then we have the radiochemical experiment. The radiochemical, in particular, the gallium experiment are sensitive to the entire solar neutrino spectrum. However, they give only an integrated rate with no possibility to distinguish among the different components. And then we have the Borexino result. Borexino was able to identify the different component of the solar neutrino flux directly with high accuracy. It was able to determine the beryllium seven and the boron eight neutrino component, also to provide the first direct determination of the PP and the PEP neutrino fluxes. And more recently, it has provided the first historical identification of the CNO neutrinos, showing for the first time in a direct way that a CNO cycle is active within stars. In discussing the importance of this measure, I will not go through the chronological order. I will start by mentioning the importance of measuring PP neutrinos. As Vic Axton was saying, energy conservation implies that the amount of energy which is radiated at the surface of the sun, either in photons or in neutrino or eventually through the emission of ecstatic particle, should be equal to the amount of energy which is produced in the interior of the sun by nuclear reaction. In principle, we can also have an additional contribution from thermodynamic formation, gravitational energy production, which is believed, however, to be negligible. Now, the radiative luminosity is measurable. The neutrino luminosity and the amount of energy produced at the center of the sun can also be determined because there is a strict connection between neutrino and energy production. And so both these quantity can be determined from the measurement of the solar neutrino fluxes. And we get, we arrive at this relationship, which is the so-called solar luminosity constraint, which connects these two quantity and which is potentially testable. which connect these two quantity and which is potentially testable observationally. Now, this may seem a trivial implication of the energy conservation. However, it is not because we are comparing the amount, by measuring neutrino fluxes, we are comparing the amount of energy which is produced now in the center of the sun, eight minutes ago, because it takes eight minutes for a neutrino which is produced at the center of the sun to reach the earth, with the amount of energy which is radiated at the surface of the sun, which is that is the result of it diffusion across the solar structure, which is a rather long process, which takes ten to the five, ten to the six year. So we are allowed to write down this equality only if we assume that the sun is stable over time much longer than the it diffusion time in the solar structure. So the possibility to test this, the validity of this relation represent a milestone. And this possibility was made possible by Borexino measurement of PP neutrino because the largest contribution to the right side of this equation is provided by PP neutrino. So PP neutrino have allowed us to test in a direct way the solar stability, to test the global energy balance of the sun and to constrain the possibility of additional energy losses or additional energy source in the sun beside the standard expectation. Okay? And as we heard from Vika Axton, we now can test this at the ten percent level, but in principle, this can be pushed forward even to higher accuracy. Okay? Beryllium and boron eight neutrinos have been historically very important for the solution of the solar neutrino problem. But they can also be used to infer the temperature of the core of the sun. Okay? The point is that beryllium and boron neutrinos depends on high power of the central temperature of the sun. This is a linearized relationship between the fractional variation of the flux and the fractional variation of the temperature and also depends on the cross section that control the branching ratio of the different PP chain termination. So we understand that a small variation of the temperature can produce a relatively large variation of the beryllium and boron neutrino flux. The present situation is summarized in this plot, in the beryllium-boron plane. The observational knowledge of the, of these two fluxes correspond to the black cross and it is compared with the prediction which are obtained by standard solar model implementing the Iz and the Loz composition. Just to give you an idea, the difference in the core temperature, the fractional difference between the core temperature of Iz or Loz solar model is less than one percent. So we are basically testing the central temperature of the sun at the percent level. Okay? So it's really a confirmation of the validity of our prediction. Unfortunately, this kind of comparison cannot be used efficiently to discriminate between the different composition. And the reason is that the central temperature of the sun not only depends on the chemical composition, the metal abundance, but it also depends on the environmental parameters, in particular on the opacity. And there is a degeneracy between the effect produced by variation of composition and opacity because basically composition affect the solar structure through opacity modification. Okay? Moreover, the uncertainties in this quantity are relatively, are small, but relatively large compared with the one percent accuracy that would be needed. If we take into account error in the environmental parameter, theoretical uncertainties in the environmental parameter, the error elipsis is given here. This is even larger if we include also the error in cross section measurement. So the conclusion is that beryllium seven and boron eight neutrino measurement constrain the core temperature at the percent level, but they cannot be used to determine the core composition with sufficient accuracy. The situation is different when we consider CNO neutrinos, because CNO neutrinos can be used to directly determine the core composition of the sun, in particular, the carbon, nitrogen abundance in the solar core. Okay? Here I show schematically the CNO cycle. In reality, it's a B cycle. In the center of the sun, only the C and branch of the CNO cycle is active and it is at equilibrium in the more internal region. In this region, almost all the, basically all the available carbon that was present in the core of the sun has been transformed into nitrogen fourteen in order to feed the bottleneck reaction of the cycle, which is the nitrogen fourteen plus proton reaction, which basically determine the efficiency, the global efficiency of the cycle and so also the production of nitrogen thirteen and oxygen fifteen neutrinos. So the fluxes of nitrogen fourteen and oxygen fifteen neutrinos depends on the integrated rate of this reaction, which is determined by the central temperature, by the astrophysical factor of this reaction and moreover, of the amount of available nitrogen fourteen, which is related to the total amount of carbon and nitrogen which was present in the solar core. So we have an extra dependence, linear dependence on the carbon plus nitrogen abundance of the core, which can be used to break the degeneracy between opacity and composition and to determine the composition of the solar core. We already heard from Vika, the idea is that one can combine the CNO measurement with the boron or the beryllium neutrino measurement in order to eliminate, to produce a combination of the two fluxes that eliminates the dependence on the temperature, which basically means that the dependence on the final result, on the assumed opacity, on the assumed environmental parameter, etc., etc. And the residual dependence of this combination can be used to infer the chemical composition of the core. One is using boron neutrinos as solar thermometer in order to fix the temperature and then to use this extra dependence to infer the metallicity of the core. Okay? This argument was first discussed in this paper and then was adapted to Borexino in the sensitivity paper, where we took into account the fact that Borexino is effectively measuring a linear combination of oxygen fifteen and nitrogen thirteen fluxes. And we arrived at this expression, which showed that this approach is quite accurate. It is limited only by nuclear reaction rate uncertainties. The nuclear uncertainties is at the level presently of ten percent with the contribution, with the largest contribution provided by the S one fourteen astrophysical factor, okay, which account for about eight percent. Now, Borexino has opened the way for CNO neutrino detection. It has shown that it is possible to extract this sign. It has obtained the first historical determination of this component. This is the result, which was published in Nature. And in this plot, it is compared with the prediction of standard solar model implementing Iz and Loz composition. So we have, now the CNO neutrino sign is disfavored at a high level of confidence that the obtained result favor Loz composition, but the uncertainty is still too large to exclude the Loz composition. In order to have an idea of what could be the goal, of the future goal, we can compare this approximately ten, thirty percent uncertainty with the kind of variation that we want to probe. For example, the oxygen fifteen flux predicted by Iz and Loz solar model differ by about forty percent. If we want to go beyond the dichotomy between Iz and Loz and to try to test the chemical evolution paradigm, we can, for example, use this determination to infer differences between the surface composition determined by spectroscopy and the central core composition determined by this method. And in this respect, a useful reference number is given by the difference which is produced by elemental diffusion in standard solar model between the internal composition and the external composition, which is at the level of fifty, fifteen percent. Okay? Here I show the result of this paper, two graphs which are taken from this paper where that show the situation pre and post Borexino CNO measurement. The shaded band correspond to experimental determination, while the circle and the crosses are the prediction of solar model implementing different surface composition. You see that Iz composition is favored, even if the error, the uncertainty is still large to exclude the Loz. Okay? What could we expect in the future? Well, Borexino has opened the way, is still analyzing data, so we can expect some progress and it will be very important. Maybe in the future, other experiment will follow the way opened by Borexino and improve the CNO determination. And here there is a list of future experiment and taken from this, this paper, the projected sensitivity. Concerning solar physics in general, it should be noted that some minor components of the solar neutrino flux are still undetected, for example, the HEP neutrino, the neutrino produced by neutron proton reaction and also the electron capture CNO neutrinos, so the neutrinos which are produced by electron capture reaction within the CNO cycle. In principle, the detection of this component is very difficult. Electron capture CNO neutrinos are a challenge for gigantic ultra poor liquid dissentillator detector. Their flux is extremely low. They would be very rewarding in terms of physical implication because they provide us with the same information of traditional CNO neutrinos regarding the composition, the central composition of the sun. And in addition of this being monochromatic, two MEV, they would allow us to obtain a direct determination of the electron neutrino survival probability exactly in the transition region if they could be detected. But from the experimental point of view, they would require a detector as clean and deep as Borexino, but much larger than Borexino's, rotate as twenty kilotonne scale, because their flux is at the level of one over twenty, the boron neutrino flux. Okay? So it's very low. Okay? So in conclusion, solar neutrino physics is entering the precision era, thanks to, in particular to the Borexino result, which has provided a detailed knowledge of the properties of the solar core. They can be used to constrain standard and non-standard energy generation and energy transfer mechanism, to constrain the central temperature of the sun and also to constrain the chemical, in principle, the chemical evolution of the sun. In the future, as we said, Borexino has opened the way also for CNO neutrino detection, which will be very important to understand the chemical composition and the chemical evolution paradigm of the sun. We could hope that, at the moment, the accuracy is still not enough, not to discriminate among different possibility, but we may hope that future CNO neutrino measurement combined with precise determination of the other fluxes may shed light, for example, on the solar abundance problem. In reality, to exploit the full potential of future measurement, there will be, and even of present measurement, it would be necessary to have some improvement in standard solar model constitutive physics, in particular, at the level of the determination of the radiative opacity and of nuclear cross section. So I thank you for your attention.
So thank you Francesco for this very interesting talk. So there are questions, comments?
Excuse me, I'm Bellini. I would like to have a comment and request to the organizer. So the request organizer is possible to, I don't know what is your intention, but it would be very useful to have available this talk of Francesco Villante. I don't know if you can be posted in Borexino site or whatever.
Yes, I think that all the talks of today, not only this, but all the talks will be posted. I don't know if there will be an entry on DocDB or what. So yes, all the talk will be archived on our DocDB.
Okay. The second is a comment on what to say Francesco. The problem is that if you have a very big detector, if a detector become bigger and bigger, it become also bigger and bigger, the difficulty to have a good radio purity. Because if you have a big plant, it's very difficult to have, to have a radio purity for all the section of this plant. This is general. Of course, it's not excluded to have a good radio purity also for some experiment larger than Juno. But I don't think so, I don't think that Juno, I am not, I don't know exactly, want to reach a very high radio purity because his goal don't need a radio purity so deep as in case of Borexino.
Well, I am not, I understand the point and I, I'm sure, I mean, I'm always impressed by the result that Borexino has been able to achieve.
Probably Joachim can.
Just since, when we were preparing the paper, the 2011 paper with Francesco, we used to say, it's impressive, twenty count per day of bismuth, because at that time, you know, correspond, in Borexino, correspond in one hundred tonne, correspond to one hundred and forty bismuth nuclei in the detector. Maybe, no, we were saying, they call them by name, I don't know. It's, the levels of radio purity that have been observed are really impressive, unconscionable in some sense.
Thank you Francesco Grisaldo, that wants to add a comment.
A question concerning the, because besides the next generation experiments and, I mean, there are a number of uncertainties as you have just discussed, but the impact of lunamegavolt on improving this metallicity issue, because I think one of the first measurements in program is the proton on nitrogen. So this could improve the S one.
I'm not sure that it is proton on nitrogen fourteen.
Fourteen?
I mean, if they are going to measure proton.
This is my understanding, maybe also improve the.
Yes, yes, we are going to measure. I don't know in, I mean, which level of precision because mostly we use to test the detector. It is Sandra speaking, sorry, because I'm a member of LUNATU. And so we are going, yes, to perform some measurement. I don't know the level of precision of this measurement because mostly we are using this reaction to test the accelerator and so the working, but our idea is it's possible to get also some new measurement about this channel.
To be fair with everybody, as I was saying, I'm always impressed by the radio purity level which have been observed by Borexino. I'm always equally impressed by the accuracy which has been, which have been obtained in the determination of nuclear cross section, you know, because there was a continuous progress during the last thirty years. And we now know at a level which in some cases is impressive. Concerning the specific, the specific reaction, you have that the CNO neutrino flux depends linearly on the S one fourteen cross section. And in our calculation, we considered the seven point six percent uncertainty, which is obtained from her matrix fit of the old LUNAD in this paper. And this correspond to a seven point cent uncertainty contribution in the determination of the core because the dependence is linear. Okay? And I mean, this is a specific dependence only of the CNO neutrino fluxes, so it cannot be canceled by looking at, by combining with other fluxes.
No, in fact, maybe Sandra can knows better, but to my understanding, this could be improved, maybe not a factor of two, but could be a significant improvement if this is again measured in lunamegavolt.
Yes, at least we will try, then we will see what we are able to get, but okay.
We recently wrote a review paper with Aldo Serenelli about the role of nuclear reaction in solar model, and we were playing this game. We were saying that in each period, there was a factor two improvement, basically in cross-section measurement, starting from the beginning, and we were saying, maybe for the next future, it would be a dream, but it would be nice to have another factor two improvement, but I understand that this is a sort of dream.
Other questions, other comments? No? So let's thank Francesco again, thank you Francesco. And we move to the last talk of this session from another longstanding Franco Borexino and also a member of collaboration, Fabio, remotely connected. We speak about geonutrinos and Borexino. Fabio, are you ready to show you the screen?
Okay, do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And do you see me?
We see both you and the slides.
That is not important.
You can start, you can start.
Thank you very much. It's a real pleasure to stay with you, speaking just a little bit about the role of Borexino in geonutrino physics. I imagine that you are tired and we are very close to the dinner, so I would like to offer my perspective about this adventure of the last years, discovering geonutrinos using Borexino data. So I would like to leave through the page of the Book of Memory, starting from this picture in 1953, that you probably know very well. Reines and Co, at the beginning of their experiment for detecting neutrinos, they analyzed the experimental data and they discovered an unexpected and an explaining background. And in that period, Gamow wrote to Reines, a teleth from Santa Fe train, chief train, and say, "It just occurred to me that your background may just be coming from high-energy beta decays, member of uranium thorium families in the crust of the Earth." This is, this was probably the first idea to detect the anti-neutrino produced by uranium thorium decays. The answer by Reines is summarizing this other message, in which he wrote that heat loss from Earth's surface is 50 erg per centimeter square per second, which basically corresponds to 50 millivat per centimeter square, per meter square, sorry. And if we assume that all due to the beta decayed, that only enough energy for 10 to 8, 1 MEV neutrinos per centimeter square per second. So basically, here you have the first estimation of geonutrino flux from the Earth. And Reines understood that this signal was not enough to justify the background, that now we know that at that time, the background was due to cosmic ray and is basically the cosmic ray in the detector. So the question is, how much is the power of the Earth in term of terawatt? And here, I summarize in this table different estimation in, from different publication in the last 50 years. And you can see that these values embrace in the range between 30 and 49 terawatt. So also, the simple information about the heat power of the Earth is not so well-known, basically because the conduction is not the only way of Earth cooling. The convective motion are responsible for significant fraction of the surface heat loss, but the main contribution come from convection. And the convection happen in particular in the middle ocean ridge, which you have what they call either thermocirculation. And it's extremely difficult to measure the flux of heat in this, in this region. The observations are sparse over the Earth and not homogeneous. And you can see clearly this uncertainty in this column, in which I summarize the millivat per meter square in the ocean, and you see a big range of value. Basically, now the people accept the value from Davies and Davis 2010, which estimate the total heat power of the Earth in 47 terawatt plus minus 2. Geonutrinos in this scenario could be the probe for investigating the radiogenic heat power, because their release heat, uranium thorium potassium release, heat together with anti-neutrinos, in a well-fixed ratio. This table, I summarize the uranium decay chain and thorium decay change. In particular, you can see the Q value, which is basically transforming heat power in the Earth, and the production of anti-neutrinos per kilos and second, and the production of power per kilo. We can detect geonutrino using this, in just beta reaction, that you are very familiar, and we used to express the result in TNU, which correspond 1 even per 10 to 32 protons per year. The first calculation of geonutrino signal is summarized in this plot, in which you can see clearly the relationship between the expected geonutrino signal on the y-axis and the radiogenic heat power due to uranium thorium. I forget to say that potassium has a, the potassium nutrient anti-neutrino has a threshold lower than 1.8 MEV, and so we are not able to detect this signal. And so now we have to speak only about uranium thorium. And different authors in the last century estimated the geonutrino signal, assuming uniform, a uniform distribution of uranium thorium in the Earth, according to different radiogenic heat power. If you introduce a model about the distribution of uranium in the continental crust, you can refine this estimation. And again, Roshi van Ragavan, at the end of the last century, estimated the signal expected in Borexino, following what is called the biosilic earth model, which is can defined as a standard model of the Earth. I will speak later about that. And so this, these are the, basically, the main estimation in the last century of the expected geonutrino signal in Borexino. Now, as you know, in 2020, Borexino published the most recent result, and here you can see the result plot projected in this, in this graph. And they fit very well respect to this expectation. But of course, it's necessary to improve the model. And so let me open another page of the book and go back to the first decade of this century, in which we start to discuss about energy of the Earth and geonutrinos, using more refined models of the crust and the mantle. And here, it's a pleasure to report some picture of that time, which we discussed was with Borexino people about this topic. And so now we need to enter in some detail about the heat budget of the Earth. Well, if you neglect the gravitational contraction and other small contribution, the 47 terawatt that I mentioned before can be divided, basically, that we call Q as a total heat loss, we can divide into contribution, the secular cooling, basically is the contribution due to the initial hot environment of early formation stages, and the radiogenic heat power due to the decay of uranium thorium and potassium inside our planet. So if we distinguish three big reservoirs in the Earth, so basically the core, the mantle, and the lithosphere, the lithosphere represented the upper portion of the Earth, you can see that radiogenic contribution is basically concentrated in the lithosphere. And the lithosphere in term of mass is, represents only 2% of the Earth mass, but since it contains 40% of the total heat producing element, heat producing element means uranium thorium potassium, it produce 8 terawatt power due to these decays. We know pretty well this number, and this number is reported here, because we can measure directly the uranium thorium content of rocks and the continent, and also in the top of the ocean. So basically, this 8 terawatt, let me say, is well-known. So the question is, what is the radiogenic power in the mantle? So what we call HM, and the remaining component is the secular cooling, that we don't have any direct measurement of that. So basically, the question is, what is the portion of radiogenic power and secular cooling, assuming to know the total heat power, 47 terawatt? And geonutrinos can give an answer, or can give some input about this question, that is still open in our science. Again, let me go back to 2005, 2010, in which we discuss about these topics, and in that time, for the first time, Kamland and then Borexino published the first result of geonutrinos. Here, I report a picture in which you recognize many people of Borexino collaboration, let me underline Ragavan, and many other, also geologists, very famous geologists. And we met all together in, for a geonutrino congress in Gran Sasso in 2010, immediately after the very famous publication of the first observation of geonutrino signal in Borexino. I would like to emphasize the rule of Bill McDonnell and Roberta Rudnick, because they had the credit to diffuse this information from particle physics in Earth science community. It's not easy, because, it was not so easy, because the two community generals speak different language, and also they use different paradigma. And so from that time, we start a kind of dialogue respect to these, to communities that are essential for understanding the, what we call in particular the biosilic earth model. So I mentioned before the biosilic earth model, basically is a kind of standard model of the Earth, which describe the primordial non-metallic Earth composition that follow the planetary accretion and core separation. So basically, at the beginning of the Earth, you have a ball of rock, let me say it this way, the separation of the metallic core happened at the beginning, and then the outer shell represented the so-called primordial mantle. And then after this phase, you have the differentiation of mantle and lithosphere, okay? So the question is, what is the composition of this primordial mantle? I would like to underline, I would like to underline the fact that we don't have a direct access of geochemical information of the deep Earth. So the deepest hole that human being perform on the top of the Earth is scratch only the top of the surface, if I remember well, 12 kilometer. And then we receive some sample from the bottom of volcanoes, but basically, we don't have any sample more than 5, 700 kilometer, respect radius of the Earth is 6400. So basically, we need to infer the composition of the Earth, measuring what they call it meteorite, astatic meteorite, condry meteorite, and make others evaluation of the dynamic of the Earth. Here, I report a summary of different publication of, which estimate the uranium thorium potassium in the Earth. You can distinguish three classes of model, the poor model, which estimate about 12 terawatt, the medium 20 terawatt, and the rich 32 terawatt of radiogenic power. Borexino, 2020, published the value is 38 terawatt, so basically, very close to the rich model of radiation, radiogenic elements. But as you can see, the uncertainty is still big, and so some classes, well, the classes are not excluded at 3 sigma. It could be nice to see the timeline of Kamland and Borexino result, according to different publications, and here, the result from Borexino in the publication in 2010, 2013, 15, and the recent publication that I mentioned before, and Kamland also. The bar represent the expected signal once, one sigma confidence level. Well, Borexino was protagonist in the all geonutrino conference that I report here, which involve not only physicists, but also her scientists, as I mentioned before. So in the Book of Memory, I would like to mention also Puccio Bellotti, which, who during a meeting in Gran Sasso in 2008, say, "Okay, guys, you will never fully understand Borexino's result if you don't know the radioactivity of surrounding rock, surrounding of the Gran Sasso laboratory." This intuition open a class of paper, which is based on the logic that if we want to analyze, if we want to infer, sorry, the mantle geonutrino signal, which is the final target of this kind of exploration, we need to know very well that what we call the lithosphere, in particular, the far-field lithosphere that here I represent in brown here. that here I represent in brown here, uh which is composed by far field crust and the continental lithosphere. Basically, we we have sample from this reservoir. This means that we can estimate the flux from these uh reservoirs. And we know that the near field crust, which basically around the detector in a radius of about five hundred kilometer, contribute to fifty percent of the total uh genutino signal. Uh due to basically the fact that the flux is inversely proportion to uh uh to the square of distance. So this means that uh if we know and we if we constrain this information, um we can extrapolate the contribution from the mantle. And we can play this game, uh not only for Borexino but also for Kamla. Uh so basically, you can consider the experimental result, subtract the far field crust contribution, the continental lithospheric mantle and the near far contribution, near far crust. And then you can uh infer the 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 signal from the mantle. And that we need to, we need to to stress one point of this logic that we need to um a far field crust model, uh which is unique for both detector. I put here I because in future we have also Borexino and Snow Plus and many and other detectors. And so we need the unique model of the far field crust. And the near field crust should be built with the geochemical and geophysical information of the region around the detector. So here if you have Kamla and here you have Borexino, uh you need to calculate the 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 radioactivity of the local um area, uh as suggested by Puccio. And the same time, uh the near field crust must be geometrically complementary to the far field crust. So in this way, all genutino signal contribution should be separately reported together with this there uncertainty. And this is the game that we play recently in uh combining the 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 data from Kamla and Borexino. And well, it's easy to understand that the far field contribution and the continental lithospheric man- um mantle signals are fully correlated because basically they gave the same the the contribution for the two detectors Kamla and Borexino. And and so uh we have this model. And the same time, uh the near field crust are based on local information in term of uranium and thorium. And so they are considered uncorrelated. So using the probability density function of the two experiment, um uh it is possible to extrapolate the mantle signal. And then uh the joint distribution can be inferred from probability density function with the condition that, of course, the signal from the mantle has to be the same for both detector. And so finally, we obtain a signal from the mantle, which is nine, the T N U plus minus five. Again, I would like to underline the fact that the the uncertainty is big, but um this is the first attempt to, this is not the first attempt, but is is the way to to extract the signal from the mantle and then extrapolate the radioactivity of the mantle. And again, since the radiogenic power from the lithosphere in this is independent by Balsillic Earth, uh we can say something about the model that I mentioned before. Uh so speaking in term of poor, medium and rich model, you can plot a diagram in which you have the signal from the mantle that you calculate before. Uh and you can project the uh the information in in term of uh radiogenic heat power from uranium and thorium from the mantle. So in this way, you can discriminate uh among the 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 models uh that I mentioned before. Uh and here you you see the 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 result of the study and basically is uh ten terawatts from the mantle, um which support the the medium model, which is basically uh based on uh con- condry meteorite. And so this is not the uh this is only the the most recent analysis of combination of Kamla and Borexino genutino result. In this picture, I reported the different analysis performed by different teams in the last uh uh ten years after the publication of different release of the two collaboration. And um and you you can see the trend uh and in in term of uh signal from the mantle, okay? Uh combined signal of the mantle, uh genutino signal from the mantle. So let me go back to the first question, which is the basically, let me say, the most important question about the radiogenic power and secular cooling. So assuming to know and to fix forty seven terawatt and assuming to know the radiogenic contribution from the lithosphere, since again, I I repeat, we can access directly to the measurement in term of uranium and thorium potassium content. And genutinos uh can say something in term of uh radiogenic power of the earth. In particular, if you combine the results of Kamla and Borexino. Uh here you see the preference value from the published model. Um I would like to under- underline the fact that these data are based on only on models, uh cosmochemical evaluation, uh analysis of meteorite, but they cannot measure directly the radiogenic, the the uranium thorium content in in the mantle. For the first time, uh genutinos can give a an input in this uh in this logic. And here I reported the 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 result, the the radiogenic heat power that we expect from uh and out from the analysis of of com- combined data um from Kamla and Borexino. And then the secular cooling. So it it since you know the total, uh you can subtract the contribution from radiogenic power and then you can extract the secular cooling. And this means that particle physics can give some constraint in term of her formation and the first stage of planetary formation. This is a very important message to give because uh um again, the uncertainty are big, but this is the um relevant result for her scientist. Uh let me go back to the to to our book and 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 see what we can expect from the future. Uh let me say, well, the future belongs to woman. Because here I report some uh colleagues from uh Borexino uh collaboration, which give a a a relevant contribution in the publication of this uh paper. And um and so uh in this paper, which is as a very comprehensive, as you know, it's very long, um is described also a strategy, the method that could be useful for analyzing the data in in June on genutinos, expected in June, of course, we are speaking uh definitely bigger detector respect to 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 Borexino, uh twenty kiloton or le piti shinti later. And we expect forty uh four hundred, sorry, even per year uh of genutinos. Uh you know very well that uh June is not designed for measuring genutino, but for measuring uh a reactor anti neutrino. So um the situation i- 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 is is not favorable to 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 genutino measurement. The ratio between the signal of reactor and respect to signal from genutino in the low portion of uh the lower portion of uh anti neutrino spectrum is seven compared to Borexino, which is close to one or something like that. So basically, the background due to reactor anti neutrino is dominant. But uh with the with the uh sophisticated analysis and who and we hope to have enough radio purity in the detector, we can, we can hope uh uh to have another constraint, the question that I put before, that I I showed before. And it could be a very relevant result also for earth science. Finally, we expect genutino also from Snow Plus. And the 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 dimension is is almost the same of Kamla. And the ratio between the signal from reactor and signal of genutino is close to one, uh just a bit higher than uh Borexino. And also in that case, we start to analyze the local contribution in order to perform the analysis that I mentioned before. So uh if you see the equation that I mentioned, uh now we have two contribution from Kamla and Borexino. In the fi- in the in the future, we can expect four contribution. And I'm sure that we can constrain, I uh again, the the information about the radiogenic power from from the mantle. Um speaking about Borexino strictly, what is in the future? Uh well, uh we have to analyze the data uh between uh in the range of time between two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty one. So it's not a long period, but we expect to increase ten percent of statistics. And so we can pre- improve the number of events. Uh and it could give another small contribution in in the in the in the in the analysis. Moreover, we need to update the geochemical local model because it's old, definitely. It's old, it's it's published in two thousand and ten and is based only seven seventy rock sample. Now we are able to measure thousand uh measurement uranium thorium uh sample in the area close to Gran Sasso and Apennines and so on. Um Virginia is going to apply for a starting grant for uh for this call. And I think that uh this kind of study is mandatory to in to improve the analysis of uh of Borexino data. Uh I would like to finish with this message. I would like to say thank you very much to Borexino because you wrote an outstanding page in the Book of Earth Science. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fabio, for this exhaustive talk. So questions? I see there is a question from Marco.
Thank you, Fabio. Um a question concerning the extraction of the of the primordial heat flux. Um we measure uranium thorium, but we do not measure potassium.
Yes.
And you do need the potassium to add up the radiogenic heat. So I am, I we are, you are basing a model, so you you measure uranium thorium and then you use a model to extract potassium and make the sum. How solid is that? I mean, how well do we know that there is not much more potassium than expected in the mantle, for example?
Well, um of course, um a a a a strong, a a answer doesn't exist. But from this plot, you can see that the contribution uh of potassium according to different author is always the almost twenty percent of the total. This means that uh the people in general don't know the total amount of uh element in term of uranium, thorium and potassium, but they know very well the ratio between them. And so uh the people agree with the fact that uh respect to the total radiogenic heat power, the contribution from potassium is twenty percent. Of course, is an estimation based on uh basically on meteorite observation. Uh and we cannot exclude the presence of potassium in the the deep mantle and also in the core. Uh there are papers which make some hypothesis about the presence of potassium in the core, which give an additional uh contribution to the radiogenic power, also for sustaining uh the magnetic field of the earth. Um but unfortunately, in this sense, genutino cannot say uh up to now uh anything because we are not sensitive to potassium with genutinos. We 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 studied also different other mechanism, but for the moment, there are no experiment that are ready to to measure this signal.
Thank you, Fabio. Other questions? Other comments? No, so let's thank Fabio again. And with with this, we close this special session. I would like to thank everybody who attended and everybody who contributed, both in person and remotely. Thank you for your kind uh word to Borexino.